Can we get that turned off? I don't know if it's in the audience or where it's at.
It was very small because it hit with such speed. Air France was basically stalled into the ocean, so you had a much bigger piece. Remember that famous tale that came up? And then, of course, when Solenberger landed his Airbus there in the Hudson River.
Turn my sound off. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Anstott.
Here.
Commissioner Westner.
Present.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the point in the proceedings where we hear public comments from anybody in the audience on any issue that's not on the agenda today. Are there any speakers under that topic or lack of topic? Okay. Moving on to item five, PL 13-0011. A couple of things I'd like to say before we get going procedurally. This is a meeting room, a boardroom. I would ask that everyone maintain the decorum in here and hold the comments down in the audience or the emotional responses that occasionally happen. Secondarily, there's no food or coffee in this boardroom, so please refrain from doing that. Do that outside in the appropriate area. And thirdly, depending on how long we go, those of you that are parked immediately behind us here are in a limited parking area, and we'll make note of that probably at the break. But those of you that are out there in that area would probably be wise to move your vehicles, otherwise have a citation waiting for you when you come out. With that, I'd like to reopen the public hearing that we -- and continue with the meeting of February 13. And we were in the public comments section. And somewhere up here, I've got cards here there. What I'd like to do is call the people that didn't get a chance to speak last time, and if they're here, if they would please come up. Obviously, if they're not here, they won't answer. And then, we have some additional cards that came in, speaker cards that came in today. Those will be subsequent to these. There is -- there'll be additional comment. Ultimately, the applicant will be given the opportunity to respond in rebuttal, and the committee will close the public hearing. The commission will close the public hearing. We will go into discussion and then make a determination. I would ask that we keep the comments on topic. I realize there's a lot of issues involved, side issues involved, that keep popping up in these various documents. I would ask you to refrain from presenting other scenarios that have some bias or some potential cause for a person's position one way or the other on this issue. With that, I will call the first speaker. Tom Ballenex? Valentin? Excuse me. Tom Ballantyne here. Henry Benner. Gerald Bennecke. I'm sorry. Come forward. If you would introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Tom Ballantyne.
Okay.
But I'm going to offer my time for another speaker. So I'm fine. Because what I had to say last time was pretty much covered at the last.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Henry Benner. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Good morning. Just want to know that if the.
Would you tell us, give us your address for the record, please?
Oh, Henry Bida, 9910 Houston Road, Malibu, one mile and a quarter from where all this is going to be happening.
Okay.
I hope not. I just wondered if the people that bought that property ever asked the neighbors whether they would object to having tigers next door to them? And the rest of the neighbors? And that's about all I have. Just have that question asked, which was never done. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Bennecke.
My name is Gerald Bennecke. I live at 8400 Mipple Omal Road, Malibu, California 90265. My presentation was deferred last hearing, so I presented the paper from a congressman that represents our district, which was in opposition to the CUP. I presented that to the commission last time, so you should have that document in your file. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Excuse me, we have a question. Make sure to do this.
The congressman for the area being?
I'm embarrassed that I cannot repeat his name because I failed to bring my copy of the.
Okay. Are you talking about Buck McKeon?
Yes, I am talking about that gentleman.
Okay. And I thought the congressman for the area was Julia Brownlee?
Oh, well, I'm afraid I have some egg on my face. I cannot reply to that.
Okay. But that's -- Buck McKeon is the congressman to whom you are referring?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Glenn Gessford, followed by Terry Gessford.
My name is Glenn Gessford. I live at 10777 Pacific View Road. When we walk out our front door, we look across where the tigers will be, and we will also be hearing them at night. A 500-pound tiger at night, "Rrrr!" I mean, do you think that's not going to affect our neighborhood? It is. And we are very upset that this has gotten this far, that you have the audacity to think that five tigers in our neighborhood won't affect the environment. We are very affected, and we don't want them.
Thank you. Terry Gessford.
Terry Gessford, 10777 Pacific View Road. I was also prepared to read a letter last week by Congressman Buzz McKeon, and I think his main concern was that the fact that the first responders, should there be an incident, would probably not be prepared to deal with tigers, and there might be a lot of extra costs to the community or the system to try to train these people to deal with something that they're not actually accustomed to dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Betolier? Tom Keenan, followed by Carlos Kurtz? Or, excuse me, Carol Kurtz?
I submitted what I had to say to the clerk at the end of the last hearing.
Okay, thank you. It was Tom Keenan. Carol Kurtz. David, excuse me, Donald Kushmer. Mike Lem? Bonnie Shirk?
Bonnie, that's you.
We submitted the letter.
Van Royce? Vibber? I have, it looks like, three speaker cards in support of the CUP that we didn't have Say Yavandan?
Last time.
Okay. And Dr. Ina Tokar? No? Andrew Guilford?
You were going to ask the chair and the commission if we can take some time to respond to that, because the level of that was asking for a response.
I will call your card subsequent. Charles Conte?
Sir, it's Charles Coat.
I'm sorry.
If it's okay, and they share a rebuttal, they could put theirs on first because we're supposed to rebut what that was.
The applicant will have the final opportunity to speak. Bernice Sundell? Sundell? Nickname of Bibi? I apologize.
It's Beatrice Chuthill.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
1300 Brookshire, Beatrice Chuthill, and I go by Bibi, yes. I'm a lifetime resident of the community, fourth generation. I retreated to that area after a very, very ugly divorce from a man here in the district attorney's office. So it was devastating divorce, but I went to the Yerba Buena area, Deer Creek Road, Canyon, Pacific View, and had a healing there. And I can't imagine anyone coming from anywhere having any type of healing when there are wild animals, lions roaring in the background. Not only is it tranquil, and we don't want to disturb or pollute that, but let's not forget that it's Indian burial grounds in that area as well. One of my earliest recalls, a memory as a child, was my father fell off Magoo Rock fishing. A surfer took him to Neptune's Net. I couldn't imagine if he had calmed himself down or maybe had a heart attack after by hearing the roar of lions. The lion issue wasn't there, it was calm and tranquil. I'm familiar with Neptune's Net since the Youngs owned it. That's Paul and Stephen. That's way before whoever owns it now, or Dolly and Paul. I managed it for Dolly and Paul. What hasn't been said here is that these, this family had these lions illegally without permits of any type, not even special event permits. It's my belief that the tiger should be taken away from them and placed in a safe environment, a sanctuary, and they should be fined and returned to Beverly Hills and not allowed to live here. I don't believe that they're planning on living here. It sounds like it's a cinder block home, probably only to breed lions. And the latest on the news is lions are being used by drug dealers. Yeah, it's funny. What are they going to do with these tigers up here? And I also want to tell you that my uncle was Manuel Lopez, so he's been 40 years in local government. My father was his promoter. I'm very aware, and so it's not just my family duty, it's my civic duty to come up here and say something. Thank you.
Question. Thank you. Carol Bush?
My name is Carol Bush. I have property on Pacific View. I have 11208, 11200, and 11202. I am about three minutes away from these tigers or across the street. First of all, these tigers are mutations. They're interbred, and a lot of the cubs come out so maldeformed, and it's just absolutely ridiculous. And the fact that they say they live in Malibu, they don't. They live in Beverly Hills. And my ranch is a corridor for the mountain lions and for the bobcats and for the deer and being that I'm just, I can walk over to their place in about three to five minutes, depending on how fast I go. The fact that they want to put, they say they're going to adopt other, to bring their group up to five, well, first of all, one of those tigers costs $50,000, and if you get it illegally, it costs $100,000. These women, there's no tigers in the movie industry these days. It's ridiculous. They do it all on video. So for these women to try to bring these tigers up there and call them the white tigers of Malibu is obscene. They're not indicative. I can't even cut down a sumac bush on my property. I have to go through such rigorous examination for anything I want to do on the property and for these women to be able to come in there and put up these cages and bring white tigers. Now, the other thing is, one of them gets loose. There's been two that got loose in Simi Valley. Took them three weeks to find them, and they shot and killed one right in front of the Reagan Library. They both were killed. Now, if one of those tigers, or two of those tigers, gets, or three, whatever, and they get into Bonny Mountain and into Little Sycamore Canyon where you have hikers and bikers, you're going to have to close down all the trails. You're not going to be able to allow people to go onto the backbone trails and to go into that area that has been designated for recreational purposes and for people to view the beauty of that area. So for me, I think it is absolutely insane. All you need is a pair of bolt cutters. I can't tell you how many people that I've told this to that thinks it's the most ridiculous and obscene thing, but then you have the ones that want, "Oh, I want to go see them. I want to go look at them." That property is not secured to where nobody can transvest it. You can get over there as easy as possible. I know, because I've been over there many a time. You know, I knew the former owner. This is just an obscene thing for a place that you people have considered one of the most gorgeous areas in the Santa Monica Mountains to do something like this and to have animals in there that are being bred, that come out with cleft palates, club feet, they're interbred, father to daughter, daughter to son. That's the only way they can keep the white line. So when they say they're going to adopt, who's going to give them three more white tigers? They're up there for a breeding program, which is ridiculous. And my son talked the last time we were here. I had to leave. And we've been there since 1972. My children were raised there. It's a beautiful area. My ranch is designated Chumash Indian Settlement. This is obscene to put animals that are not indicative of the area. We do enjoy the regular animals that are indicative, our mountain lions, our bobcats, our deers, our coyotes, but white lions of Malibu? That's absurd. And like I said, once again, if one gets loose, or if somebody wants to go take a look at them, if somebody takes some bolt cutters and goes over there and cuts that fence, you guys are going to spend a fortune trying to find them, especially in Bonny Mountain there. And people hike, bike, and come up to see the beauty of that area, and you're putting them all in danger. So I thank you very much. Okay?
Thank you. Lisa Seiderman?
I'll give my time up to another speaker.
Carlos Seiderman?
Carlos Seiderman, 9871 Houston Road. Briefly, I want to thank you for the time spent into this subject. That tells me the considerations and the time put by the planning department in seriously looking into the subject, and very appreciative for that. Specifically, I want to mention the position of the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy, which has been very active recently in the conservation of the natural species of the area. And in their letter, they expressed their concern in bringing unknown native tiger and the impact that that will happen to the native animals of the community. Further, since last meeting, there were new pictures surfaced that it shows the way the tigers were walking up in areas, pictures that we did not have necessarily before, to the extent that it shows in Instagram some of the tigers walking in public areas, public canyons, without a leash. And I think that that is very concerning for the community, not only to have them, not only the noise, but the behavior, which is exactly the behavior happening right now in the place where supposedly these tigers are housed. Again, thank you very, very much for the concern that you have put for our community, the time that you have put in analyzing. It's very appreciated by the neighborhood and by the time the planning department has put into the research. So thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Lisa Seiderman? I didn't hear your comments.
I'm sorry. I was giving my time up.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. First, I wanted to say, as a resident of the area, I very much regret the level of acrimony that has developed over this issue between the two sides. I attempt to get along with all of my neighbors. If the applicants move to the area, I certainly intend to try to get along with them. I must say, it was not a good start for me to read in the supplementary materials an accusation submitted by the applicants that all the people here in yellow hats are hired to be here by Mr. Seiderman. Let me assure you, I am here to protect my neighborhood. No one has paid me, and that is true as well of all the neighbors who are here whom I know. We are here out of conviction. In that context, I'd like also to say, because we are here out of conviction and out of a genuine concern about our safety and the quality of life in our neighborhood, I think it's extremely impolite for the applicant's booster area to be laughing and tittering at our speakers. It's happened at least twice already this morning, and I personally would beg them to show the respect for our speakers that we have shown for theirs. Now, I've listened to all the hours of testimony that you have listened to, and I must say it's been quite overwhelming at times. There are great technical issues being debated here. None of us here in the audience is an expert on the safety, on the safe care of tigers. There have been issues debated here about how high the fences should be, whether there should be roofs on the enclosures, whether there should be double doors, the procedures for taking the tigers in and out of the enclosure 50 times a year, and other technical issues. And I don't envy the commission, the job of sorting through all that. However, you don't have to at this time. That is the role of an environmental impact report. SEQA says that where there are any significant, where there is any significant evidence presented of an effect on the environment, that an environmental impact report is required. The only exception, and it's the exception I'm sorry to say the county seems to be relying on, is where no one has shown any substantial evidence of a significant effect on the environment. Now, I, like you, have listened to literally scores of people who are heartsick with worry about the safety of their neighborhood, and I personally have presented evidence on what I anticipate to be the very disturbing quality of sounds that come from tigers placed on this property. And to find as you must, if you would approve a negative declaration on this project, that not a single person here has raised any significant evidence of a substantial effect on the environment, would be totally unjustified based on the evidence you've heard, and frankly, a slap in the face to all these residents who have appeared here to try to save the quality of life in their neighborhood. In order to approve this project at this point, you would have to make the certification of the negative declaration that there has been no significant evidence of a substantial effect on the environment, and commissioners, I don't think in good conscience you can hold that based on what you've heard. Now, you do need an EIR to approve this project at this time. You don't need an EIR to reject it. The evidence you have heard about the genuine horror of the residents at what's about to happen to their neighborhood, the evidence that you have heard on how utterly inconsistent this use is, this proposed use is, with the quiet and peaceful neighborhood where this facility is proposed to be placed, demonstrates, I think, that it's just not a good idea. It's not fair to people who have lived here much of their lives, who have invested their monies, their time, their lives in this neighborhood, to have to be subjected out of the blue to this serious risk and these serious consequences. I submit that you should exercise your discretion to deny the CUP now as imposing unacceptable safety risks on this neighborhood and as being utterly inconsistent with the current uses of property in that area. I have just one other thing to add. There's been a dispute about noise, how much noise tigers make when they roar. Staff took exception in the supplementary document to evidence that I had submitted, I think also a sound engineer had submitted, based on the assumption that tigers roar at a level of 114 decibels. Based on staff's exception to that particular study, I went to the library. I found this book, Tiger: The Ultimate Guide, in the science section of the Los Angeles County Library. I have, it's by a leading expert in the field who has spent decades in India studying tigers. And I have submitted with my paper an excerpt from this book, which states that tigers roar at a level of 120 decibels. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
I overlooked something earlier. If I can backtrack on a procedural issue. I meant to ask the commission whether there are any. whether there are any disclosures or addition of disclosures other than what we conveyed last meeting.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Dugas.
Last time, I made reference to a property listing for the subject property using Redfin. And I forgot to submit it. So, I need to submit it. It's 11077 Pacific View Drive. And it is listed on Redfin. The listing that was referenced, Zillow. One called VisualShows.com, which is another homes for sale, homes for rent, homes for lease. And Trulia, which is another one. And the reason why I went to multiple ones is because, first, the one that was given to us in our staff report referenced Zillow, and you have to register. I'm not registered for that. I was registered for Redfin. But also, that the listings are inconsistent with the project description. And I discussed this with Mr. Baca at the last hearing. And rather than speak for him, he can just share that information with the rest of the commission and the public. Also, I visited again, and I took pictures of the drive leading to the gate. And I noticed last time, when I went in early February, that there was remodeling debris that was dumped in the gully off that drive. And six weeks later, it was still there. And I took pictures of that. So, I want to submit that. Incidentally, the... Well, that's it. The two pictures of the debris that's been left for six weeks, and then these listings that show that there's a newer house that's approximately 2,000 square feet. I think that's the one that people refer to as the cinder block house. The original house, the old house, at 1650 square feet. And then a guest house at 700 square feet. So, I want to make sure that I put that in the record because I will be trying to get to the bottom of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Onstock.
I have none.
Commissioner Wester.
Nothing further.
And I have no further disclosure. Okay. Continue with the speaker cards. Marlon Hale. Mary Cummins.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Mary Cummins, and I'm at 645 West Ninth Street in Los Angeles. And I'm here today to support the CUP. Now, I've been a real estate broker and appraiser in California for over 30 years. I'm also an expert witness. And as you know, I did some of the research and wrote one of the letters for the CUP for the Lockwood Animal Sanctuary.
Excuse me, can I stop you for a second? Did you speak last time?
No.
Oh, I thought I saw your name on speaker card from the last meeting.
Oh.
Okay. I apologize.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. Anyway, you approved the CUP for the Lockwood Animal Sanctuary, which I did the research on and sent a letter. I'm also president of Animal Advocates. And we rescue ill-injured and orphaned native wildlife for release back to the wild. We rescue coyotes, bobcats, foxes, all the way down to bats. And I have a USDA permit and a Fish and Wildlife permit, similar to what the housers have for their animals. Now, I already sent in two letters. Now, all the issues in the first letter, I believe, have been dealt with. And I then called Brian and Jay, or they called me last week. And they gave me the list of the last four remaining issues or so. Now, one of the issues was density. They said that there were 28 residential properties, homes, within half a mile radius. And using public records MLS, and being, I calculated that there were between seven and 12 homes, including the subject. Some of the properties are three parcels with one home. And some of them are vacant. And most important about the density is that there are no properties for miles and miles north of the subject property. That is wilderness area. And then to the west, there are two properties. And then there are, again, many miles of wilderness. Homes cannot be built there. This is one of the least dense places in the area. Now, they also said that they thought that the land use would be inconsistent. The land use of the subject property is identical to the neighbors. It is a family living in a house with animal enclosures. All the people around them, they have a home, and they have corrals, and they have barns, and they have fences. It is the exact same use. These animals are in an enclosure. They're not outside of the enclosure. And another issue was the distance to the two camps, which were between three and six miles away. Now, if you remember with the Lockwood Animal Sanctuary, there was a Boy Scout camp, which was four miles away. And that CUP was approved. So, that is a similar distance to the two camps that are next to this property. Now, the other issue was public safety. I've known, and I want to first disclose, I'm not being paid to be here today, even though I do this for a living. I'm here because I've known the housers for many years. I know their animals. We have the same veterinarians. And I support what they're doing. And I know that they're doing a wonderful job. Now, they've had a perfect record with Fish and Wildlife and with USDA ever since they started. I believe it's about 13 years. They have triple and double door cages. And one thing that everyone who has a USDA or Fish and Wildlife permit, we all must have written emergency plans for natural disasters, evacuations, or escapes. We must have recapture equipment and phone trees of everyone that we have to call. These things are already done. Now, as a real estate appraiser for over 30 years, having an animal in an enclosure is not going to affect the values of the neighboring properties. We're not talking about tigers running around in the fields. They're in an enclosure. They're not out. They won't be able to be seen, and it most likely won't be able to be heard. And one person sent in a letter stating that they spoke to their insurance agent, and the agent said that they would either raise the rates or cancel the insurance policy. Insurance for a property covers natural disasters like fires, floods, and earthquakes. It does not cover something that could happen from another source or a person or being these things. So, it would not affect the insurance at all. And another issue that some of these people have brought up is the sound of the roar of the tiger. I've known these tigers for many years, and I've only heard them make slight little sounds when they're eating. I have never heard a roar out of them. And if anyone is really concerned about the sound in the area, I was out there on Saturday to do sound readings. And the sound of the motorcycles going through the canyon is much louder than any possible sound from any of their animals. Oh, and one other issue about the public safety, the chances of... I mean, statistics have shown that you are much more likely to be killed by a horse or a dog than by a tiger. And then, of course, you're still more likely to be killed by a car or a human. In fact, last night, I got an emergency alert from L.A. Animal Services saying that there's a mountain lion in the area near Tahanga. And these mountain lions are out there. They're protected. And if they really thought that a large tiger mountain lion out there was an issue of public safety, then we should get rid of all the local mountain lions, which, of course, we can't. Now, I've done a bit of research into this. And I believe that the main person behind the opposition to the CUP is the neighbor, Carlos Seiderman, who's at 10995 Pacific View. He doesn't live there, but he runs a business there, even though it's a residential property. He needs a CUP to have the business. He's had it there since 2005. And he incorporated in 2011. He previously tried to buy the property from the previous owner. And his main reason is he wants to be able to have a horse trail from his property into the state park.
Excuse me. What are your comments? How do they relate to the topic at hand?
Well, I believe...
I mean, these are periphery issues as to motivation of a neighbor.
I believe that is the main motivation behind the opposition to the CUP. Mr. Seiderman wants the property.
Okay, we need to keep the comments on topic.
Okay. Anyway, I've known the housers and their veterinarian and their animals for many, many years. I support what they do. They have a perfect track record when it comes to public safety and health. And I support the CUP. As a real estate expert, broker, and appraiser, I don't see it affecting the neighbors. And I would request the commissioners to approve the CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all the cards we had, with the exception of two cards. And I've called those names already. Mr. Goford and Ms... I'm sorry.
I'm Marlon Hale, author of the noise study report.
Go ahead and repeat yourself in front of the mics, please.
Marlon Hale, 663 Bristol Avenue, Simi Valley, California.
Thank you.
I did testify at the last hearing. I'm the author of the noise study report for No Tigers in Malibu. And so, there's been some discussion back and forth about a few topics relating to noise that I would like to address associated with this. And I'm in receipt of a memorandum to the commission from Mr. Baca, who raises a number of issues in the noise study report. And I mostly concur with his critique, as a matter of fact. It's very difficult to find real legitimate and verifiable information on tigers and their vocalizations. However, I'm also in receipt of a noise study done by Rincon, an excellent environmental consulting firm here in Ventura, addressing this issue. And they have gone to the current location where the tigers are enclosed and made a sound study. I'd like to address that. And I'd like to address that issue. And then I'd like to address the 114 dB versus the 114 dB-A issue raised by staff. In the Rincon report, they went to the property where the tigers are currently housed. And they made measurements from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on March 13. And I believe you have a copy of their report. And their conclusion was that they did not encounter any tiger vocalizations. They encountered some monkeys at the site that were playing and making noise. But since they did not encounter any tiger vocalizations, they felt that the problem didn't exist. I'm referring, however, to Mr. Baca's memo where he quotes Dr. Tietz's duration of lion roarings per hour. It's a very good document. I didn't have access to this previously. And I appreciate the opportunity to have this available.
Pardon me for interrupting, but do you mean lions?
Well, I don't mean lions. But the document presented to you by...
Okay. Previously, we've had a couple of speakers that have said lions instead of tigers. But you are talking indeed about lions.
I'm talking tigers. And now, I have a document here about lions. And my testimony last time pretty much follows exactly what is right here in this table, that the tigers also roar in the evenings and nighttime and don't do any roaring, pretty much, during the daytime. And that's carried out right here in this table.
Thank you.
Okay. And looking at this, between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., no roars of any of the lions studied over a 10- to 16-day period. So, it's not surprising that if we're trying to make measurements of vocalizations of tigers, and we do it between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., we're going to miss it. I've looked at this table. And following the very methodology that Mr. Baca has used, looking at one lion roaring and five lions roaring, I've discovered that the county noise ordinance will be exceeded for the time periods for two tigers and five tigers roaring during the hours that this table represents. Measured over a period of 10 to 16 days, averaged, there were two lions roaring between the hours of 9:00 p.m. till 11:00 p.m. and from 2:00 a.m. till 6:00 a.m., which is in the nighttime, the county noise ordinance would be exceeded by the tiger's roaring at 114 decibels at one meter. And they would violate the ordinance at the nearest residence to the west of the proposed site. Now, addressing the issue of dB versus dB-A. It is a frustration to me and to other acousticians to go into the literature, even sometimes by authors in our own discipline. And we find dB referenced and SPL, Sound Pressure Level, referenced, sound level referenced, dB-A referenced, DBC referenced. We have to make sure what they're talking about. In acoustics, as in electric light bulbs, we have two different important characteristics. One is called the sound power level. One is called the sound pressure level. The sound power level is a characteristic of the source, 100, 150 watts. You can take that and move that light bulb anywhere you want in the universe, and that light bulb is still going to be a 150-watt light bulb. It's a characteristic of the source. But its position relative to an observer determines how many lumens or how much candle power is available to the receiver. And that same analogy applies in acoustics. The acoustical power is a characteristic of the source and is used in the modeling calculations of different noise sources. And the pressure, sound pressure level, is a positional relationship characteristic. If my source is over there, and I'm right next to it, it's louder, it's brighter. If my source is over there, and I'm way over here, it's dimmer, it's quieter. So, sound pressure level always needs to have a position associated with it. And we find throughout the literature references to decibel levels, sound pressure levels, sound levels, with no reference to location. In one study that I recently found, actual recordings were made in Africa of these big cats, not tigers, lions. The recordings, and I can understand this, were made at a distance of 300 meters. Who's going to walk up with a microphone to a wild cat, a big cat, and try and get a sound level off from it? Dr. Tietz has referenced 114 dB. Mr. Baca's memo quotes this author. And he says... He quoted the same author that I quoted in my noise study, referring to tiger roars as being 114 dB-A at one meter, when Mr. Tietz actually said 114 dB. Mr. Tietz indicates that Mr. Tietz did a tiger roar study using a deceased tiger and the larynx of a deceased tiger, using a compressor blowing air through it to get his measurement. However, he also is quoted in an article that I quoted in my report. The article's entitled "Born to Roar." Quote, "A lion's or tiger's roar can reach 114 decibels to someone standing a few feet away, which is about 25 times as loud as a gas lawnmower." I'm quoting Dr. Tietz. Now, to me, there's clues in that as to what he means. Note that Dr. Tietz, in his article quoted, states that the tiger's roar roar can reach 114 decibels to someone standing a few feet away, which is about 25 times as loud as a gas lawnmower. I assume by someone, he means a human being, listening to the loudness of both a tiger and a lawnmower. How loud is a lawnmower? I've got a table here that shows a lawnmower is 100 dB A at three feet, which is about one meter, and in decibel math, 25 times 100 dB A is 114 dB A. The term someone, and loud, and comparable, and these other words that are used in his article, refer to human listening, listeners. And the human sensitivity, listening sensitivity, is described as A-weighted sound level, or DBA-weighted sound level, or DBA. So in looking at the context, I conclude that when he's talking about loudness, and he's talking about it, and I've got here the s, sound pressure level, DBA SPL. Gas lawnmower at three feet, 100 dB A, 25 times that, 114 dB A. So following the logic and the decibel math of Dr. Tite, it's 120, 114 dB A for a human being at three feet. Better have a fence between you and him. So basically, if there's any questions, I, those are the only two points I want, I've been asked to address at this time.
Commissioner Armstrong.
Can you estimate the noise level at the nearest residence?
Yes.
And what is that?
Following the, just, I'll just pick, pick a couple of, of points here. We have between 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., where there were .85 minutes per hour per lion, the sound level at the nearest residence would be 44.8 dB A. And for five, following Mr. Baca's analogy in the next paragraph of his memo, five during that hour also roaring, that'd be 51.7 dB A.
Does that exceed county standards?
Yes, it does.
By how much?
County standards is 45 dB A at night.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Commissioner Dukas.
Have you had occasion to go to the project site?
Yes, the proposed project site? Yes, I have.
And, and so have I. What struck me just in general is that that is an extremely quiet area.
It is.
It's unusually quiet, and I've been to every corner of Ventura County, as, as many of my fellow commissioners have had to do in the course of our visiting places. Does that make a, a difference when you have the, the background being so utterly quiet, and, and whatever introduced noises, for example, a motorcycle passing by? Does that make a difference?
In the county's noise standard, it has two different approaches to compliance. One has to do with a fixed noise level that during the daytime is 55 dB A at the residential pro, residents. At nighttime, it is 50 dB A, or evening time is 50 dB A. And by the way, the county day starts at 6:00 a.m. Most places it's 7:00 a.m., but in Ventura County, it starts at 6:00 a.m. And the nighttime limit is 45 dB A at the residence. That's the fixed noise standard. The ambient-based noise standard, the limit is ambient plus three. And so, yes, if that's all it was, ambient plus three, it would be significantly violated throughout the entire period, except when they're not making any, any noises. However, in the standard, it says the greater of the two. So quiet noise areas don't get the benefit of protection.
Could you say that again? Somebody dropped something and made some noise. I couldn't hear what you said.
So quiet areas in the county do not get the benefit of code protection, because they're quiet. And in this area, any sound, I could clearly understand conversations that were occurring when I was at the Seiderman property, and then up at the residence, which is elevated above, to the west, which is elevated above the Seiderman property, could clearly hear conversations on the next road to the east, which is, I'd say, probably a good half mile away.
What about on the trail? It's very close to a trailhead, to the Sereno, Serrano Valley. Were, were you able to go there?
I wasn't at the trailhead, exactly. I was at the various residences and at the Seiderman Stables, which is actually the closest occupied property, occupied by horses, occupied property next to the, to the proposed project.
Well, I'm, I'm talking, I'm referring to an area where, you know, the public heights, you can, you can reach this, this trailhead directly, just on a, a road that, that runs behind the property, and it dumps you out at the, at the trailhead. You can also reach it from Sycamore Canyon, La Jolla. It's, it's all connected with the backbone trail.
Right.
What, did you have any, any chance to go in that area?
I did not.
Okay. I just cannot emphasize enough how utterly quiet this area is, and I think it has something to do with its, its remoteness, and, and just the, the shape of the area. It's, does that make a difference?
Well, the shape of the area can create kind of an amphitheater-type situation. But sound, if it has a direct line of sight, and there's not a lot of ground cover, it just goes. And low-frequency sound goes forever. It's very difficult to stop a long, 20-foot-long wavelength, the low-frequency sound. High-frequency sound, the air itself begins to mitigate it as it propagates through. So quietness out there is a, in any quiet area, it doesn't matter where it is. Any sound can be heard, and a startling sound can be very startling.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you. Okay, I have the two speaker cards I spoke of before. I'll, the commission also received a letter from Mr. Mike Bradbury requesting the opportunity to speak again. I don't see him in the audience. I don't know if he'll show up or not. Andrew Guilford?
Mr. Chair, we, we had asked for the opportunity to respond to the applicant's rebuttal. That was Mr. Bradbury's written request as well. And so we defer until after the rebuttal, and then, understanding that the applicant may have limited comments in response to the remarks.
We understand the applicant will have the final opportunity to speak.
We do. Since it's been five weeks since the applicant's presentation, we are expecting that they may hear new information to which we would like to respond today, understanding that once we've responded with very brief comments, that the applicant may have limited comments as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Conte.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay-
Would you speak, would you come up to the podium, please?
I note that opposing counsel did not. If it's okay with the commission, if Ms. Hauser could present, and then I can hear from Mr. Guilford, and then I'll defer my comments to the end.
That's fine. Who's going to be your speaker? And would you fill out a speaker card before you leave? Again. Introduce yourself, please.
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners. I'm Eric Nagy from Jensen Design and Survey, representing the applicant, Irina Hauser. And we'd like to present our rebuttal and address some of the issues brought up in the previous hearing on February 13th, as well as some of the information presented to your commission today. Regarding noise, in addition to staff's response to the noise study provided by Mr. Hale previously, we have presented your commission with a noise study prepared by Rincon Consultants that uses measurements from the actual tigers. That study found potential impacts to noise levels from the tigers to be less insignificant. And in response to Mr. Hale's comments, with all due respect, the lion study he references is for a different species on a different continent, was made in the wild with wild animals, and is not representative of or comparable to the subject tigers. I encourage you to base your decision on the study of the actual tigers that we've presented to your commission. Regarding biological resources, staff has also addressed the comments regarding biological resources. There is a new comment letter from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy warning of potential biological impacts. But that letter does not appear to be from a qualified biologist, nor does it cite testimony from a biological expert. CDFW and planning biologists have reviewed the project and concluded that no significant impacts to biological resources would occur, and I'd like to emphasize that. We do have a couple requested condition changes, and it appears that staff has addressed a couple of those from the previous hearing. Request that condition one be revised to accommodate up to five tigers. Four tigers, of course, would still be acceptable per our discussion at the last hearing, and it seems as though staff has allowed your commission to have an option in that regard.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes. We request that condition one be revised to accommodate up to five tigers, per our discussion at the previous hearing. Four would be an acceptable number for us, and it seems as though staff has allowed your commission the leeway to change that number. We also request that condition one be revised to require a chain-link roofed arena. I didn't necessarily see that language in there. Of course, that's pursuant to the discussions at the previous hearing. And we'd like to address the height. It's, the fencing comes in six-foot sections, so if we could have the fence height be 12 to 15 feet with the roof, and that would depend on the structural analysis. And that would also be addressed through the building and safety permit process, of course. We request that condition seven B be modified to allow, to allow an effective permit term starting two years from occupancy clearance. This was also brought up in the previous hearing. That's usually done by building and safety, and that's when the tigers can actually occupy the property. That's more representative of the two-year term, I believe, that staff is trying to provide to the peremptee here. Or the other option, of course, would be 10 years with a two-year review and reporting periods to your commission. All of the other proposed conditions and safety plan revisions are acceptable to us. We feel that staff has done an excellent job in that regard in providing conditions that will allow your commission to approve the project. And again, we'd like to emphasize that the project is consistent with all county regulations, and staff found the project to have no significant environmental impacts. There is no substantial evidence to support denial of the CUP. And again, we feel that speculative fear should not drive your commission's decision. We respectfully ask your commission to take the actions on page 23 of the original staff report and approve PL 1311. I'd like to introduce Irina Hauser now, who will address the remainder of the issues from the last hearing, including tigers at their residence and transportation safety. So we'll do a PowerPoint now. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you again for hearing us. The last time we had the opportunity to address you, we spoke about providing a better, safer life for our two tigers, while creating no impact to our neighbors or the surrounding environment. Given the presentation made by the opposition, we are here today to directly respond both to the valid issues raised by the Planning Commission and our neighbors, as well as to provide you with an accurate record in response to certain misinformation provided to the commission previously, and perhaps intentionally so. The opposition has relied on fear, intimidation, and misinformation to convince some in the community to oppose this CUP. The opposition's presentation at the previous hearing was an apparent attempt to call our reputation into question, if not to destroy it. However, we must emphasize and repeat that we have received no citations for violations, and no injuries have been suffered by anyone over the entirety of the many years we have been working with these animals. Our unblemished record is the direct result of our absolute commitment and adherence to stringent safety measures, and the professional manner within which we care and interact with these animals. Unfortunately, it is easy to instill fear in certain people if they are told lies, or even in some instances, threatened. However, although it may sometimes prove difficult to keep an open mind and evaluate actual facts before making a decision, if the commission does so here, we are confident that it will approve CUP PL 13-0011. Staff's stated concern is the population density around our 19 acres. The SECA report states that there is absolutely no environmental impact. Virtually every single finding is in our favor, including correct zoning significantly exceeds size requirements, exceeds all federal and state requirements, no environmental impact, no noise impact, no impact on water, fire, wildlife, no adverse effect on utility of neighboring property or uses. Legal precedent already exists, consistent with the general plan, consistent with the county's coastal program, and compatible with surrounding development. Staff found that it is not reasonably foreseeable that the tigers would escape. The staff compared our property to one of the already permitted properties within the county, but it's important to distinguish the Martin property from ours. The Martin property, which is permitted for 100 animals, has 19 out of 29 developed lots, or 62 percent, versus our application for a maximum of five, which has 26 developed out of 56, or 46 percent. We actually have less density of residences. A better comparison, though, than the Martin property would be the property where their tigers are currently housed in Los Angeles County, and have been for many years. Within a three-mile radius, there are several hundred homes, schools, parks, and there's a new housing development that will be built within a few thousand feet.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Why don't you give us the address of where they're currently housed? And give us a-
It's on Tick Canyon-
Geographic, geographic explanation of where it's at.
It's on Tick Canyon in Canyon Country, Santa Clarita area in California.
Thank you.
And there's some housing developments all around it, like-
And, and how long have they been there?
Since, since we first started, so 12 years, 12 years, the older ones, 12, 13, 13 years, almost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additionally, people ride horses past the property on a regular basis with absolutely no issues. There's absolutely no impact on the neighbors or the neighborhood, and there are many times more animals than we plan to have, including tigers, lions, primates, bears, et cetera. We will build enclosures on the new subject property that not only meet, but exceed all regulatory requirements. Proper building permits will be obtained. A structural engineer will verify all enclosures will be reinforced to withstand fire, earthquake, wind, and of course, the strength of our tigers. Then, the appropriate federal and state government agencies will inspect the enclosures prior to bringing the tigers. Our location is perfect for this project because it is isolated, rural, private, secluded, and surrounded by wild, mountainous terrain. There are no parcels to the back of our subject property, and the property is, and the project is located at the back of the subject parcel. And the tigers would be housed towards the rear of the parcel. The density argument is the only foundation of the recommendation to deny our application, but that argument is not justifiable. As far as the property values and disclosures, letters were sent from professionals which discussed the fact that no negative impact can, will exist from our CUP. In fact, homes around other similar facilities have increased in value at least as much as other properties in the area, if not more. The fact that a unique property exists in the neighborhood often increases the values of the properties around it. The opposition cited disclosure 1103.2. This code specifically discloses flood, fire, earthquake, and other natural disaster hazards, which has nothing to do with tigers. which has nothing to do with tigers. In terms of our safety plan, we are well ahead of most licensed facilities. Under local, state, and federal laws, the only requirement is that there is one person on site, and that person does not even have to be a trainer. Several experts have spoken to explain that even in a huge animal park or zoo that is open to the public, typically one person is left after closing in order to alert others in case of an emergency. In our case, we go above and beyond the legal requirement and require that this person be a qualified trainer. Furthermore, it does not require different teams to load each tiger. No facility in California has two tigers on, two trainers on site for each animal. Once the animal is loaded and secured in the truck enclosure, the next animal is prepared, loaded, and secured. This process is much quicker than what most experience, even with horses, because our animals are so eager to go into the truck. Because the brush and terrain in the facility where they currently reside is very similar to this property, except that the brush there is even drier than at the current facility, we have on several occasions been very close to a brush fire. As a necessity, we have conducted drills to determine the duration of the evacuation process, as well as prepare to evacuate on several occasions due to the proximity of the fire. During these drills, it took us less than 15 minutes to prepare and load our tigers into the trucks. Because our animals are conditioned to the vehicles and enjoy their time in the vehicles, they load very quickly. We recently discussed having a drill with the captain of the fire department near the property in question, and you will be happy with the results. Of course, in extreme circumstances, if they cannot be loaded safely, we will work with the fire department to set up a shelter in place. They can be left in the exercise pen with the swimming pool and concrete, surrounded by clearing, and we will add that to our safety plan. We also have a fire hydrant on site to assist. No person will ever be placed on danger. Safety is always our primary concern. As we have stated time and time again, safety is our number-one priority for our trainers, our tigers, and the community. However, at every turn, the opposition seeks to lump us together with all of the rule-breakers and all of the people who have no business working with exotics. The case of the Moorpark tiger is a perfect example of this. Let's analyze this particular situation because it was within this county, and it emphasizes many of the issues of how problems with wild animals occur due to individuals with records or serious infractions, who do not do things properly and who do pose a clear and present danger. The individual who owned these tigers was a criminal and has been convicted on several felony counts relating to his care of the animals. He had previous animal violations prior to this incident, was fleeing another county due to his hazardous conduct with respect to keeping of these wild animals, and brought these animals into Moorpark completely illegally and kept them there. This tiger, along with several other wild animals, was placed in crates and enclosures which were not inspected, completely illegal, and completely unsafe. The tiger was not the only animal to escape this facility. When the authorities came to the property, they found three lions, two tigers, a snow leopard, bobcats, and lynx. Some were in the barn and some were running around. There were no proper permanent cages on the Moorpark property whatsoever, and it was no surprise to the investigators that the tiger escaped. The owner had absolutely no permission to house these animals at that location, and had never applied for any type of CUP, and had not alerted officials to the fact that he was in the area, had lied to authorities claiming that the animal was not his even after it had been out for two weeks. He also did not socialize and condition his tigers as we do to respond to its name. Unfortunately, its escape was not reported, and when it was discovered weeks later, was denied multiple times by this individual. This is a perfect example of why rules and regulations with respect to these animals are so important, and it is equally as important that people who follow proper procedures are able to obtain proper permits. The last thing we need is people to be afraid of the process and for people like this individual to own wild animals without proper permits and inspections. But despite all of these issues, although the tiger was out for four weeks, it did not hurt anyone. It was in an extremely densely populated area. In fact, officials were convinced that it roamed within a mile of a school for over two weeks and did not cause any trouble. Additionally, goats, chickens, and other animals were left out in order to try to capture this animal. However, because it did not know how to hunt, it did not even attempt to hurt these animals. In fact, the necropsy report showed that it had not eaten in two weeks prior to its death. Conversely, we spent years training and learning how to properly care for wild animals prior to applying for our permits and prior to obtaining our tigers. We have absolutely no violations and no injuries through all of our years working with these animals. We spent about five years prior to properly applying for a CUP, working with county staff to evaluate every potential property in order to find the most appropriate property. We have complied and cooperated with staff at every step of the process. Moreover, their enclosures have been and will be constructed by the same company that the state of Ohio uses for its new facility. And all of the enclosures and the exercise pen will have a roof and multiple layers of security. Comparing us to this criminal is completely unjustified, but it shows the constant attempt by the opposition to mislead others without providing the facts. Additional safety concerns were raised with respect to our mobilization equipment. For emergencies and as a last resort, there is, whether there is a direct threat to human life, we do own a 40-caliber Glock, which is powerful enough to take down a tiger, and we are trained to use it. But we have an extensive safety plan setting out a list of procedures, safety equipment, and agencies that must be notified immediately in case of emergency. It includes a teleinject system, a special device which operates like a rifle, and is equipped with special darts that tranquilize the animal, for which we took a special class and received certification. Another speaker brought up that horses will act differently in the presence of predators. However, predators, like packs of coyotes, bobcats, and mountain lions, currently exist and roam freely in the area. Additionally, he conceded that many horses are afraid of cows or plain cardboard cutouts as well. As many experts have testified, our tigers will have no additional impact on horses. Many facilities have horses and various other livestock within sight, smell, and sound of tigers with absolutely no impact. Additionally, you have heard testimony of horses being led near other tigers on set for the very first time with absolutely no reaction. Furthermore, there are many large equestrian facilities that share roads and trails within facilities that house tigers with no adverse reactions, including near the Los Angeles Zoo. You also have a letter from a world-renowned preeminent equestrian center in the southern hemisphere where Olympic trials are conducted right past facilities that house tigers. Finally, you have seen pictures of the tigers and horses meeting for the first time in a very positive manner, and of horses living in close proximity to tigers and lions. Several speakers from the opposing side agreed that the keeping of the cats on premises was not the concern rather than transport of the animals. Again, we would like to stress that we were asked to provide the maximum number, which is what we did. But the important thing here is that our extremely strict safety protocol is the priority. We drive the truck through two separate gates, closing and latching each gate into a fully enclosed area before the tiger is allowed into the exercise pen and into the truck. Even though we currently have no limits whatsoever placed on the number of times we take them off premises, we agree to limit their movement in order to satisfy concerns as part of the CUP. There are already many productions that occur in Malibu that use wild animals, far more than our maximum of 60 trips. Typically, production or event coordinators obtain the proper permits for the specific job. They are driven on the same windy roads and PCH. In our situation, our animals travel in pickup trucks, which have been built to specifications and reinforced with self-sufficient transfer enclosures within the vehicle. These transfer enclosures have even been tested in roll situations, as the letter from the expert explains. Our methodology of transport has been tested and used by many companies in this area. No issues, injuries, or escapes have ever been documented to occur during this type of transport, and no incidents have occurred, according to staff, due to these wild animal permitted projects. Instead, most issues have occurred with horses. We address the concerns of people opposing our application based on the location of the property, and we address the people who oppose our application based on the concerns over transport. We would now like to address the people who voice concerns over anyone working with wild animals. This issue has been in the news lately because of the hugely successful film Blackfish. The equivalent of this film in the big cat and elephant community is Tim Harrison's award-winning film called Elephant in the Living Room. Even Mr. Harrison, who fought vigorously for more rules and regulations and who is vehemently opposed to keeping any wild animals as pets, wrote a lengthy letter in support of our application because he knows that we do things the right way, with the safety of our animals, our trainers, and the community as at large as our first priority. Another expert who spoke at the last meeting had decades of experience and consults for the USDA regarding big cats. He clarified some of the issues brought up at the last hearing in a letter he presented. A person like this would never speak on our behalf unless this was the right thing. All of these people are speaking on our behalf strictly because we have the facts, reputation, and regulations on our side. People who argue against working with animals often assert that these animals are unpredictable, which is a little misleading. Underlying the common reaction to traumatic animal incidents looks a contemporary human expectation that the world should be risk-free. We fully expect to be protected at all times from all things, but nature cannot and should not be tamed. Each species and each individual animal is endowed with a well-established range of behaviors and rarely acts in conflict to these. Understanding and correctly predicting animal behavior is among the most basic challenges and responsibilities of any trainer. This is precisely why an animal which has been properly conditioned and socialized by professionals is magnitude safer than one which has no contact and no socialization. Having said that, we never forget that these are wild animals. Animals are often held accountable for their actions, but they all, always, just simply act as animals, and people are responsible for minimizing situations in which harm may come to anyone. Why is it when tens of thousands of people die in automobile accidents, we do not seek to ban cars? Or when people die on mountains, we do not seek to outlaw mountain climbing? In the U.S., over 200 people a year die due to horses, but we do not outlaw horses. But whenever a wild animal injures someone, there is such an outcry. The reasons are: Animal attacks are rare, which makes them dramatic and newsworthy. Few people actually professionally work with wild animals or experience them firsthand, and it is much easier to blame, condemn, and legislate out of existence sometimes something you do not fully understand and that does not fully affect you. And three, people do not take into account the fact that many times the individual who gets hurt was doing something improper or even illegal. Yet, all of these are lumped together. As stated previously, several states, even within the U.S., have absolutely no regulations when it comes to these animals, and often incidents occur because unprofessional people deal with these animals without proper safety provisions. Or as in the case of the Moorpark tiger, people do not follow the law and keep these animals illegally. The loudest voices heard in the wake of traumatic animal incidents sees any tragedy as an opportunity to say, "These animals belong in the wild," or "These animals belong away from people." This death proves it. No. Nearly every species of animal can be superbly maintained in captivity where they are able to live rich lives, that they are quite, that are quite a bit longer and more comfortable than in the wild. For example, the average tiger lives eight to 10 years in the wild and 18 to 20 in captivity. We can learn from such creatures and enjoy them and share them with millions of people, especially young people, who will grow to care about the natural world. These animals are not demeaned or mistreated and are not yearning for freedom. With this project, they will have plenty of space, excellent nutrition, and fabulous lives in an extremely safe environment. And again, these animals can no longer exist in the wild. Our incident-free record is a testament to our supreme concern for safety and the additional precautions we take on a daily basis to ensure that this record stay intact. Animals share their worlds with us, and in doing so, bring immeasurable joy to our lives. We are not, we are afraid not of them, but for them. We want them to be preserved in the wild and captivity by skilled and dedicated experts. Working with animals is safe and immeasurably beneficial for humans and animals. I want to briefly address the pictures with, which those opposed to the CUP suggest an implied recklessness. I will not take up your time discussing pictures one by one, as many of the pictures are out of context or even do not involve our tigers. But you should know that all safety measures are always taken when dealing with these animals, and that is always our primary concern. We have always employed all safety measures and have never hidden what we do with these animals from the government, from the community or government regulators. We have stated, we have never stated or implied that we have no contact with these animals because we do believe that proper and safe contact provides a much more enriched and much safer life for these animals and those around them. This is not just our belief, but our professional opinion based on knowledge, experience, science, and the support of the animal community. For example, when our three-month-old cub met the author of the bestselling novel Tiger's Curse, she did so in an extremely safe, prepared environment. Two layers of fencing were in place, one with panels and one permanent around the property, as well as a leash, and yes, it was an extremely positive experience for everyone involved, including the cub. Five trainers were there with the cub to ensure safety. At the time, we called officials at the city of Beverly Hills, explained what we were planning to do, and asked whether we would need any special permits. We were told that we would not need any special permits to what we already had at the time because of the special rules pertaining to cubs. Because it was not a public event, because it was not a film production, and because she would not be housed there, we were told we would not need any additional permits to what we already had at the time. At the last meeting, opposition presented information that a permit should have been issued. We were surprised to hear this information and immediately contacted the city of Beverly Hills Planning Department. We met with quote enforcement manager, Mr. Nestor Otazu. We explained that we had all of the federal and state permits and that prior to bringing the cub, we called the city. Mr. Otazu clarified the confusion, stated that BHMC regulates otherwise prohibited and non-domesticated animals by special permit. This special permit is typically issued through our animal service provider, in this case, Los Angeles City Animal Services Department, in cases where such animals are brought into the city for a specific event such as parties or filming. The purpose of this permit is to ensure the general safety and welfare of the public as well as the subject animal. This type of confusion is not unusual, since the city of L.A. has different regulations and would not require a special permit for something like this. And since the city of L.A. is the animal service provider for the city of Beverly Hills, and the laws are not consistent, this type of confusion is not uncommon. He not only stated that it was conceivable that we received that response, that the permit was not required for our situation, but that the law, even as written today, is meant to protect the public from a much larger and older animals who could pose an actual threat to public safety. This type of confusion is not unusual, as many regulations have changed over the last 15 years with respect to wild animals. For example, it used to be perfect- For example, it used to be perfectly legal for members of the general public to take pictures with adult tigers, although we never did that. And the rules for members of the general public changed to be six months, and now they are three months or 35 pounds. In fact, here's a picture of the son of one of our most vehement opponents with someone's tiger cub. Let me explain what happens on a shoot. Typically, one is unable to see everything in the background. The entire idea of a film or photo shoot is to provide the viewer with an image that the production is trying to relay, not to provide the behind-the-scenes preparation that goes into it. In our limited experience, 15 minutes of shooting can often take 68 hours of setup prior to arrival. And some shoots are done on a green screen, and then the background is added later. Other times, first the animal shots are completed, and then all the shots of the people are done separately. Then this is spliced together to look like they were together in one shot. Although from time to time we do a commercial project, most of the work we do is educational, often for charity, such as the one we did recently for the children's hospital benefit. We hope this gives you a clear picture of those photos, what those photos actually represent, that our safety record is impeccable, and that safety always comes first. The pictures on the Porsche was not of us transporting the tiger as the opposition tried to lead you to believe, but was for an ad, which again was done very safely. Again, it was parked in an enclosed gated area with five trainers present. She was on a leash, which was later taken out in a post-production edit. Cub was three months old, and I want to point out she did not use her claws or scratch the car in any way. This reinforces her conditioning, showing that she is comfortable in new situations. And yes, we have it on our website because we are allowed to do that. It was completed very quickly and was an extremely positive experience for her. We do not hide what we do with them as we have no reason to do so, but instead insist on making sure it is done properly and safely for everyone involved. Furthermore, unlike the misleading comments that we allow members of the public, or as the opposition said toddlers, actually teenage members of our family, to pet our tigers, shown in the pictures, all of the people in the pictures with an adult tiger are well-trained members of our family within the confines of fenced areas. We have already discussed the pictures at the beach where law enforcement was present, and we have brought these permits for you. There are limited pictures from various jobs that we have done over the years. Unfortunately, we do not have time or an opportunity to take pictures one on a shoot, so we are very limited to what we have. Also, please be aware that many film and photo shoots already occur within Malibu. Tigers, lions, and other wild animals are already transported in and out of Malibu for various shoots. Furthermore, we do not have a swimming pool at any residence, although we do hope to build one for the tigers on the property if allowed by building and safety. Pictures one and two show swimming pools are not our homes, and the tiger in picture two is not even ours. It is imperative that we socialize and condition these animals with our family of trainers and with our dogs. There is a reason why we have no injuries or incidents. Neither of our tigers is declawed, and they both grew up interacting with our dogs, including a miniature pincher, completely safely. The pictures and video of the Doberman tiger playing were with our first tiger over 11 years ago when she was a young cub. This type of socialization improves the safety for all involved. So what may seem like just play is actually a well-supervised and monitored opportunity to properly socialize and condition our tigers. Furthermore, we are so safety-conscious that although we socialize our tigers with our dogs when they are young and allow supervised play, once they can hurt the dog by just virtue of their size, we do not allow them to play except through the safety of caging between them. And the comment by one of the neighbors that there is no supervision because the trainers are not in the photos is misleading. Safety is always our number-one priority. The opposition also presented a sound study. It did not take into account any actual data on captively-bred tigers. It was based on a study that has no specific analysis of live tiger sounds. Mr. Guilford himself stated, "Tigers, if they do not roar, if they do roar, only roar for three different reasons. When they take down large prey, our tigers are fed clean meat and chicken from the supermarket, so this could never happen. For romantic reasons, when they are in heat seeking a mate. And females calling to their young. Clearly, two and three are impossible because our animals are spayed, and we do not breed, contrary to the information that was disseminated to the neighbors claiming that we breed. Our tigers were spayed as soon as it was safe to do so. If we ever obtained additional tigers, those would necessarily be spayed upon the first opportunity as well." We agree with the video shown by the opposition that extremely experienced professionals who follow strict protocol and regulations should be the only ones to breed. We completely agree that our time and energy should be spent against those who practice improper breeding practices and inbreed. Additionally, the sound studies presented was done based on the fact that a tiger would roar for 10 minutes every single hour. There is not one piece of evidence that this could ever even possibly occur. Further, no captive bred and raised tigers were used in this study. Every single expert that was asked by the county, including zoos, and every single animal expert, agreed that in captivity, tigers do not give out these sounds. The experts agree that although tigers can give sounds, out sounds as loud as a German shepherd, this is not typical and by no means constant. And there is absolutely no scientific evidence whatsoever that any tiger in captivity has ever made a sound that would make any person or animal paralyzed. In fact, every single expert said this was absolutely absurd. As far as the ambient noise, there are multiple large dogs barking constantly, ducks and roosters next door that make a lot of noise, much more than our tigers have or will ever exhibit. Additionally, the packs of coyotes produce very loud sounds regularly at the property. The sound study that stated how quiet it was should have taken all of that into account, but it did not. As far as lions, they are completely different animals with completely different social structures. They live in groups and call out to each other constantly. Tigers are solitary animals and do not have the same social system, so they will not exhibit similar behavior characteristics. They also have completely different vocalizations than tigers. Every expert will tell you you cannot compare the two. Since the last meeting, we hired a sound engineer to take measurements of our tigers and other animals at the facility they are currently in. The results were submitted to the county and clearly showed that there was far more noise from the wind, human speaking, and monkeys playing with their toys than from any of the tigers. Moreover, none of the noise exceeds any Ventura County requirements. During the study, one of the tigers was moved into the exercise pen, and we ran through a typical session. Later in the study, the tigers were fed their diet in their enclosure through the feed tube as would occur on the property. As the engineer observed, the sound the tigers made were quieter than two people conversing. There will absolutely be no impact on any of the neighbors. We wish to emphasize that if our CUP application is approved, as we believe it should be, we will coordinate and work with building and safety as well as structural engineer to make sure that extreme safety measures are in place when building this facility. Next, additional state and federal agencies will inspect the project before any animals are brought in. We pride ourselves in our perfect record. We meet and exceed all rules, regulations, and safety requirements with absolutely no violations in order to maintain our permits and would never do anything to put them in jeopardy. Many in the community are supportive of the project but hesitate to speak out in fear of angering others. Another segment of the community was originally opposed, some to the point of protest, but upon learning of the facts now support the project, and some of those people are here in attendance. Additionally, I know that the opposition gave another letter from lions and tigers and bears at the last meeting. We spoke to them. They absolutely did not give another letter against us. In fact, they called staff prior to the first hearing after they had an opportunity to speak to us and asked that their original letter be removed from the letters against us. This is another example of misleading information that continues to be presented to this commission. On the other hand, others may continue to question our CUP application, which is unfortunate and largely based on false and misleading information and distortions, even attacking us personally and suggesting that we are somehow unfit or unqualified. Given our track record over many years, this is simply not borne out by the facts. A comment from the opposition that we would never live in a blockhouse is mean-spirited. Rather, we look forward to moving on to the property. Moreover, some letters in opposition, including from the American Humane and Congressman, and others, were premised upon false information that we breed tigers, that we believe that they are tame and domesticated and have them as pets, or that we treat them poorly, all of which are completely untrue. Nevertheless, we would like to move forward by working with every neighbor to make sure that every possible concern is addressed, including as basic as visual appeal and as important as fear. We will do everything in our power to always be there to help everyone in the community that we can. We will also work tirelessly to alleviate any possible concerns that people may have. If we are granted this permit today, we would like to invite not only everyone on our side, but also everyone on the opposing side to come join us for dinner, right here across the street at the Thai restaurant. Come meet us, speak to us, voice your concerns. We will address them one by one, and we'll try to set up a proper permitted situation so that all of you who are willing and interested can meet our animals and see what we do and how we do it in an extremely safe environment. We would be happy to set up a properly permitted educational seminar for the neighbors and staff so that people can actually see the reality of what we do. Every single person who was opposed to us and has seen what we do has changed their opinion, so we would like to present that offer to anyone who is willing to just come look. You will see that our methodology of working with these animals creates an enriched, safe environment. You will see that they respond to calling their name. And conversely, if a stranger would approach them when they are not with us, they retreat to the furthest possible spot of their enclosure by natural instinct. Again, we have seen our animals react in stressful situations, and thus, due to conditioning, can better predict their behavior in stressful situations. We know that once people know the truth, you will welcome us, and you will see that what good neighbors we are. It is in everyone's interest to work together. This creates a safer environment for all involved. We would like to end by extending our hand to each and every neighbor. Every single person opposing us has not met our animals, has not come to the property, and with the exception of one couple, has not even met us. Given the opportunity to meet with us, we are confident that those reservations will quickly move beyond them and appreciate why the CUP is properly approved. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a break. Excuse me, Anne, I'm sorry. A question from Commissioner Dukas before we do that.
I want to make sure that you see the disclosures that I made and that you've had a chance to look at it, and I'll get your response after our break.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a break for 10 minutes. We'll continue afterwards. Okay, continuing the meeting. Did we have any questions? I'm sure we have some questions. We'll wait till after we have the speakers finish up. Do we have a... Can we have Ms. Hauser come back up to the podium, please? Commissioner Dukas had a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't know whether you need to refer to them or not, but could you tell me again, how many houses are on your property at that address?
We have one house and one guest house.
And is the house the cinder block construction? And it's about 2,000 square feet?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay. And then the guest house is the 1650?
No, it's like...
700?
700, yeah.
Okay. Tell me about the old house that's referenced in the listing at 1650.
When the property owner sold us the property, I believe he, that was a previous residence, and as far as he knew, once the new property was signed off, everything, you know, they came and inspected all the properties and everything was fine. We came to find out probably about a year ago somewhere, I don't know when exactly, no, not less, probably six months ago, that they would like, that the county would like us to remove the bathrooms from the house that's 1650. We were planning to use it as a barn anyway. So that's what, as soon as we found out, that's exactly what we did.
Okay, I am not finding your testimony credible because that is the original house that's 1650, the new house is the 2,000, and the guest house is the 700. What Mr. Baca told me was that there was a garage conversion or something, and that had to be taken out?
Absolutely not. Please, please check on that, please.
As, pardon me, as the land use consultant, this is really my area, partially to respond to. If you look at our site plan, there's several structures on the property. There's a main residence, which is the 2,000-square-foot residence, which is the newest one. Prior to that, there was a main residence designated on the property that was, now is a barn. That barn had a bathroom in it and may have been listed on Zillow as an additional residence. I don't know. That may be the difference that you're seeing.
Have you had a chance to look at the listings that are Zillow, Trulia, Redfin? There are all of them, and some of them are for lease, the 1650 was for lease, the 700 was for rent.
I saw that.
Okay, you did have a chance to see that?
No, we didn't. Those listings are not from us, that's from the previous owner. None of those are from us.
Of course. You bought from the previous owner. I understand your property is not for sale.
Right.
Right.
I think the confusion there may have been from what was originally, what was designated as the original primary residence on the property. That is no longer the primary residence on the property. That structure still stands. It is a barn, and I believe there is a garage next to it, too. That is a garage and a barn now. And if you'll see the site plan from Jensen Design and Survey that was submitted as part of the application, that is accurate.
Okay. And do you recall my first question to you at the last hearing was how many houses were on the property when you purchased the property, and you told me two?
That's right.
It's correct. There's a house and a guest house.
And a garage and a barn.
Yeah.
When you purchased the property, how many houses were on the property, and you said two?
That's right.
And indeed, there were three. So that's all I want to get... You know, I reviewed the testimony from you before, and I chased it down with Mr. Baca, and he said, "No, it was because there was this garage conversion," and now you're saying barn conversion.
No garage conversion.
Garage is garage and the barn.
Okay, moving on. Do you state that this is not your backyard, this latest thing? I think it's called Exhibit T. Is this Exhibit T? Have you had a chance to look at this over?
Sure, I'll show it to you.
Are you stating that this is not your yard and these are not your tigers?
It's talking about the Hollywood home.
Which picture?
It's talking about your Hollywood home. It's talking about your Hollywood home. I believe you're referring to the Hollywood residence?
No, Beverly Hills. Which pictures? I'm sorry, but which specific picture are we talking about?
The document isn't numbered.
The...
This is it, yeah.
But...
There are pictures of a house, what it looks like perhaps at one time. There... I can't tell if it's a play surface, it looks like a big checkerboard.
It depends which... I'm sorry, it depends which picture specifically you're referring to?
Okay, there are a series of them on these two pages in that document.
Which ones? I'm sorry.
One shows an aerial of a house that has... Were they not provided this document?
We have it right here, it was put online.
I don't... Okay, this one? Okay.
Okay, is that your home?
Which one? With the top, the top?
This?
Oh, can they get a color copy? That's...
Yes, that's your...
This is probably this one, but not this, not those.
There we go. I think it'll be easier to see it in color.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that, I wasn't aware that you didn't have a copy.
Okay.
Is that your home?
We don't have a swimming pool, so... But I think the one towards the left, we don't have a swimming pool in our home. So I see a swimming pool at the top of the thing, but I think the house to the left probably is our home.
This is on the corner.
Okay, well, it's pretty distinctive. Is that your home?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Is there a cage in the backyard there?
There is no cage currently in the backyard. There was a small kennel for a dog when the dog was a puppy. There is no cage in the backyard for a big animal.
So that was not to contain the tiger?
No.
Okay. Are the pictures below of that house, the interior of that house?
No.
Moving on to the next page, is that the exterior of your house, those pictures?
The one with the little swimming pool is, and the one where there's a dog with a frisbee, yes, the rest are not. Oh, sorry. The one... Sorry, the one with the... No, the rest are... Yes, sorry, and the one with my daughter is, yes. They were all taken at the same time.
And the one with the shed in the back and the tiger and the dog playing with that same checkerboard, that's not your house?
The shed.
The second one in the middle?
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Sorry.
And the one of your son in front of that same shed, that's not your house?
That's my son, yeah. That's your house.
So five of those photos of you...
Yes.
Five of those photos are of your house?
Yes, 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 sorry.
Okay. And did your... Were they visiting the tigers?
It was... Well, a lot of them are the older tiger, which again, we were completely allowed... I want to make it... I think there's a little bit of confusion.
I think that you should just answer directly the questions that I am putting to you at this point.
Okay.
How did you secure the tigers when they weren't playing with the dog or the children?
They were never housed there, ever. They were brought there on a couple of occasions, and we are allowed to bring and take our cats different places to socialize them. It is something that was...
How are they secured otherwise when they are not playing with dogs or children?
The property is fully fenced. We also have panels around everything when we're taking... When they are out like this, we have panels around everything in addition to a secondary level of full fencing completely around the entire thing. And in addition to that, they're... Well, they're on a leash, but that's completely secondary. It's fully, fully fenced, and there's additional panels that we put up every single time.
Are you aware of what's called a special events permit in Beverly Hills?
We called Beverly Hills, and again, we spoke to Mr. Nestor Otazoo just after the last meeting.
Are you familiar with a special event permit?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
And you were advised that you did not need a special event permit?
Correct.
Because they were not being housed?
Correct, and we weren't...
So you could bring your tigers from the facility in Santa Clarita to your home in Beverly Hills without just taking them from your truck and putting them in the backyard?
First of all, they're babies. In every single picture here...
Wait, I'm sorry, was the answer to that yes or no?
When they are babies, we have completely different rules than when they are adults. It's a complete... I mean, I can't just answer yes or no because it's completely different rules.
So this photo of the boy, the dog, and the tiger, that's when the tiger was a baby?
Yes.
Three months?
This one not, but this is a... If you look at my son's picture here and him now, look how many years ago was that? And that, at that...
I don't have a problem with your son being in your backyard. I'm just asking about the tigers.
No, no, I just want to emphasize that this was the oldest tiger that was over 10 years ago, and the rules were different at that time. At that time, it was six months old.
That is a six-month-old tiger?
Yes, absolutely. We have never taken an adult tiger without whatever.
Absolutely.
This is a six-month-old tiger?
Yes.
I see. Okay. Did you solicit...
Look at the little min pin.
It's not a Doberman next to it in the picture, it's a miniature pincher that's eight pounds.
It's big.
Okay, for that matter, the tiger playing with the little dog, is that the miniature pincher?
Yes. This big.
That's not a Doberman, it's an eight-pound miniature pincher.
Moving on, this Tim Harrison, Director of Outreach for Animals, did you solicit him to write a letter in your support?
Tim Harrison is somebody that I met previously, and we, before we even got the property, he knew about our situation and about our cats. And we discussed the fact that we were looking for many years to sign the property to house our cats. And at that time, we were... He was very much, you know, he made the movie Elephant in the Living Room, and we discussed different aspects of how safely interact with them and what the rules and regulations are, and that was it. And then now, when we have this situation, I contacted Tim Harrison, and I told him what our situation was and what we were planning to do, and he said that he would like to... He was going to be here on an original meeting, but unfortunately, he had a cancer surgery and he was not able to attend.
Okay, so you are aware... So this isn't an unsolicited letter, you're aware of it?
Yes.
And, okay. And he says that these tigers have been housed in the... Okay, he says in his letter, "To remove these animals from their accustomed care causes mental and physical trauma to the animal." And he says some other things, too, but you say that the tigers have been housed in Santa Clarita for 12 to 13 years.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Excuse me, since we've changed speakers on Commissioner Dukas' question, would you reintroduce yourself?
Oh, Sophia Krychek. I'm Irene Hauser's partner at 11077 Pacific View Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, his letter seems to contradict... He talks about how important it is for the big cats to stay where they are and not be moved, but they've been housed in Santa Clarita for 12 to 13 years.
What he means is to stay with their owners. He's talking about the fact that he was working very hard against private ownership, and what he's... This is what he's referred to, that he understands that the cats have to be with their original owners that raised them. That's what he's referring to right there.
How much time do you spend at the Santa Clarita facility?
We're there at least every other day, and that's... We spend minimum of an hour plus with each cat, socializing them, working them in an exercise area. Sometimes we spend more time depending on what's happening. That's basically what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, are there questions? I have some questions. I'm assuming Ms. Hauser, but in any case, I'm curious about the feeding and not specifically the process. I want to know what they eat and how much they eat, again, and I want to know what the process is of getting whatever their food supply is to the proposed site.
Their food is typically kept in freezers. It's typically similar to exactly what you would see in store-bought food. They have a varied diet, so in other words, they'll have beef, then they'll have chicken with special vitamins that are made for, you know, zoological animals. And once a week, they have something called a zoologic diet. And then they also have special, you know, bones that are brought in for their teeth and stuff like that. It's varied every day because it would be varied typically, and that's what zoos and others have found to be a better way to give them a diet. It's fed through feed tubes, we never walk in to feed.
No, I understand that. I get beyond that. What is the facilities you have, or what do you have on-prem, or you intend to have on-prem to contain those foodstuffs?
That's why we're using the barn area. We're going to have several freezers full of food. We also have a generator in case power goes out or something like that to make sure that food is kept. And then it's, you know, it's defrosted on a daily basis. There's a process basically where it's defrosted on a daily basis for the next day, and there's, you know...
How does that food get from the point of purchase to your proposed facility?
We pick it up... There's most of the wild animal... Well, not... There are many wild animal facilities that go through this program, and I believe the wolf sanctuary is also part of that program. And it's, you know, you pick up the food once a week and...
And you also get carnivore diet?
We pick up... It's from one of the facilities. It's delivered to one of the facilities, and then the food is picked up once a week.
Did I hear you say it's delivered from its point of origin to a facility?
Yeah, I'm not sure specifically how it's delivered, but all of the, you know, wild animal compounds go to that particular... Like, we've picked up food many times.
How do you anticipate it's going to be delivered? How do you anticipate it's going to get to the location where you're proposing to?
Somebody, one of us will pick it up.
And in what quantity are we talking about? Is it a truck-type situation?
Yeah, it's small. They eat...
You're saying once a week?
Yeah, they eat about 10 pounds a day.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, pickup trucks easily.
They... You mentioned generators, and it was mentioned briefly in proposed conditions of approval, but I hear nothing about the operation and backup and hours of operation on generators and stuff like that, which can become a noise factor in that type of environment. There's nothing in here on that?
We have a generator for emergency only, and it's a Honda, which is the quietest possible generator, and it... The noise factor of that particular generator is below... And I can provide you with the actual information, but it's below what California... It's a special California requirement generator, and it's made by Honda, which is the... As far as we were told as we were doing the research, that's the quietest possible generator.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I noticed in one of the... On the staff report, our staff report under Exhibit 19A, and I don't expect you to know what that is necessarily, but it's page 226 of 821 pages. It's... I just took one random copy of a, what appears to be a Lake County inspection report for Victoria McMillan, Animal Rentals United, or, excuse me, Unlimited, 31305 Tik Tok Canyon, Canyon Country. It's an inspection report. What's the significance of that as it relates to you?
What year was it? I'm sorry.
Actually, it was 1987.
We... Nothing. We had no...
Who is Victoria McMillan?
They used to own the ranch where our tigers are currently housed. They no longer own that property for years, or the business.
So it's not relevant to this?
No.
Okay. I noticed on your... The safety plan that was submitted, it appeared to be a cut and paste, only in that the text was referring a couple of times to LA County notification and facilities and that type of stuff. And I see a smile from your sister there, so... So I assume that was somebody else's plan that's being adopted for this proposal?
We're using information from current plans as well. We have to maintain our safety plan because of our federal and state licenses. We have to maintain it to be relevant to the facility they're currently at because that was a requirement, and we just had reapproval for our fishing game and all that stuff. We had to make sure that that's relevant to that facility as well.
So that's not your actual formal plan? That's your proposed plan? Is that what I hear you saying?
Correct. And once we're on the property, you know, until you build something on the property, you also have to figure out what the best location, you know, as you're building, depending on what building and safety, what they require and what things they are going to want. Obviously, we're going to have to work with, you know, staff and make sure that our safety plan also coordinates with what they're requiring as well.
Okay. On a companion page, Exhibit 21 of the staff report, a single page that I identified here, it lists the number... The people that are to be notified in case of emergency evacuation and that type of stuff, a variety of people, including the McMillans, looks like. Are they still in business? Are they still in the trade?
They are...
For notification purposes?
In the trade.
And I also see a list of evacuation points, compounds, and locations sorted by distance, and they're all in LA County. The New Hall, you know, Canyon Country area. This is part of what I was referring to, is that where the animals are going to be moved to if there is a need to move them off-prem?
It really depends on where the specific... What specific situation it is. We've also since spoken to Steve Martin, who has the facility in the area, and our evacuation plan will be updated. We can't update it until we actually have our cats there for fishing game and for USDA, but it will be updated for Ventura County once the cats are going to the Ventura County property.
Okay. It seemed to me, just a personal observation, it seems to me that the plan ought to be in place before occupancy occurs and amended after the fact as opposed to...
There is a new one.
A proposal for us to consider as part of this process.
Isn't there a new plan doesn't...
It's a personal observation.
If I could speak to that, the safety plan, there's two versions actually of it. There was one that was revised already for Ventura County, and staff, I believe, has placed a condition that prior to zoning clearance, the safety plan will have to be updated per cent to sheriffs, fires, all the other agency regulations.
Right, I read that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But do you know what I think has Steve Martin's facility in there as well? I believe it does.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the comment.
I believe the new plan that we had submitted has Steve Martin's facility in there as well.
Okay. As I read the report, a number of locations, we're concerned about, obviously, the enclosure and the wiring, and several places throughout the report, I... And several places throughout the report, I saw an exchange of description between six gauge and seven gauge. There was no, there was contradictions, and I certainly don't know why, but it appears there's a difference between six gauge and seven gauge. Is that just a typo?
We're required, it must be, we're required to have nine gauge. Six-gauge wire is significantly stronger than nine-gauge wire. So as you go down in gauges, it's, every gauge is significantly stronger. We are going to use only six-gauge wire for all of their enclosures.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what we use now.
Okay, that's all I have, questions I have. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, then moving on to the remaining speaker cards. Andrew Guilford.
Did she return?
Lori.
Were those papers returned? Okay. I forgot to ask her a question.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez and Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Andrew Guilford, and I represent the Blue Wave Trust, which owns the property located at 10995 Pacific View Road, which is next door to the proposed Tiger facility. Before I start, I want to also thank the Planning Division, Ms. Prillhart, Mr. Baca, and Mr. Dvorowski for all of their time and effort, as well as your commission for all of your time and effort on behalf of this issue. We support staff's recommendation to deny the CUP application. And we'd like to make just a few brief comments addressing some of the points touched on by the applicant today. Before I get started, just as a preliminary matter, the applicant referred to me, I believe, discussing the circumstances under which tigers roar. I don't have that knowledge. It was not me who made those comments at the last hearing, so please don't ask me about the circumstances under which tigers roar. We strongly support the staff's determination that the housing of tigers in the Deer Creek community is not compatible with the surrounding development. The housing of these animals is more appropriate in a less populated, less dense rural area. There are 28 residences within just one-half mile of the proposed Tiger facility. And as you heard today, as well as on February 13, these residences are the homes of families with children, retirees, retirees, and elderly, among others. By contrast, the Lockwood facility, at the time of permitting, which I believe is in 1987, had just four residences within a half-mile of the facility. And even those four residences, as shown, were on the outskirts of that one-half-mile radius.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
Lockwood Valley Facility, what are you referring to? The dog hybrids?
We're referring to the Steve Martin facility.
Steve Martin, okay, thank you.
Yes, that has been a point of comparison. The staff report addresses the current density at Lockwood, and this is 27 years after that facility was permitted. But even using the current density, the staff correctly determines that Lockwood is a more suitable site for a Tiger facility than would be Deer Creek. Confirming the lack of compatibility, as you've heard, the neighbors in the community are uniformly opposed to this development. And the opposition is not limited to those in the immediate neighborhood. As we submitted in connection with the prior hearing, more than 11,000 Ventura County residents have signed petition in opposition to this proposed project. The staff also correctly noted the adverse impact of a Tiger facility on the two year-round camps in the area. Representatives of both camps were present at the February 13 hearing and firmly opposed this project, in contrast to the Boy Scout camp nearby to the Lockwood facility where they had no such opposition. Now, in addition to what staff has addressed, the proposed Tiger facility would be incompatible with the surrounding development in several other respects. We have now learned that the applicant proposes to place a roof over the entire caged facility. And essentially, and you've also heard testimony from residents, that this property is in their line of sight. So essentially, what we're going to have now is a giant chain link enclosure on this property, creating an eyesore for the community. Similarly, also on this issue of what's this going to look like to the surrounding development, presumably this facility will be lit up at night, also creating an eyesore for the facility, for the community. You've heard as well that the proposed Tiger facility will have other impacts on the surrounding community. For example, insurance exclusions will be triggered in the event that the tigers do escape and cause damage to persons or property. It appears that the neighbors would have no insurance as a result. Tiger facility is also incompatible with the surrounding development for additional reasons. We've addressed concerns raised by fires in the community and the concerns about evacuating the tigers, particularly in a situation where you have one person located on the property. Recently, there was a rainstorm, and I understand recently there all, that resulted in power outages for significant periods of time. I understand there were also power outages just recently, for whatever reason, in the Deer Creek area. And there is no plan associated with what happens in the event that there is a power outage and the tigers have to be evacuated. The applicant proposes reverse 911 as a potential for alerting the neighbors in the event of an emergency. One of the issues that hasn't been covered in Deer Creek is the fact that there is very limited to no cellphone coverage, which obviously impacts the value of a reverse 911 to the neighbors. Similarly, there are issues with connectivity, such as Wi-Fi, which would impact the ability to monitor these tigers to the extent that there's a proposal to have security cameras and any off-site monitoring of those security cameras. We've also discussed the terrain of the Deer Creek area. And in contrast to the Lockwood facility, which is on flat ground and accessible by a long straight road, the Deer Creek area is only accessible by a long winding road coming up from PCH, which causes significant challenges, not just for transporting the tigers, but in the event of the need to evacuate in any emergency situation, in the event of needing to access the site. The Deer Creek community, we submit, is just simply not suitable and not compatible for the proposed development. Staff has also correctly found that the proposed project would be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare. As stated by the staff, regardless of the conditions of approval imposed on a project, the potential for human error resulting in the release of a dangerous animal will always remain. And we submit that this potential for human error is particularly an issue here. What the applicant said on February 13, and what's been repeated here, is that it's very important to understand that these tigers are not pets, that these are wild animals, and that safety is our number-one priority, and that we are always cognizant of the fact that these are wild animals and not pets. But the photographs that we've shown tell a different story. The tigers are in fact handled just like pets and treated just like pets by the applicant and her family. And there was some discussion previously about these photographs, and an acknowledgement by the applicant that these are her tigers and her family. Now, still on the issue of human error, we understood the applicant's position to be that there is no direct human contact between the tigers and others except for the trainers. But again, that's not what the photographs show. This is a photograph of an author, Colleen Hawk, who wrote on her webpage about how she was allowed to pet and hand-feed meat to the applicant's tiger while the, quote, "trainer," end quote, looked on. It's not correct that the tigers are limited in their contact with humans to just the trainer. And it's not correct that the applicant treats these tigers as the wild animals that they are as opposed to just pets. Now, we heard from a trainer associated with Hollywood Animals that the applicant and her sister were trained at Hollywood Animals. In Chair Rodriguez, we previously submitted safety reports and inspections for the Hollywood Animals facility, showing, as we discussed on February 13, that Hollywood Animals received a grade B due to a concern about the safety of the Tiger enclosures. I believe you may have pulled one of those sheets, perhaps, in the submittal, which was just meant to be a complete submittal of all the documents that had been received.
Yes, in response to you, yeah, that was identified as Exhibit 20 in the staff report.
Now, in written submittals, we showed that the Hollywood Animals training was an eight-day course for which there were no formal prerequisites. We also showed in prior submittals that the applicant and her sister state that their safety plan is the same as the Hollywood Animals' safety plan, perhaps explaining the cut-and-paste that Chair Rodriguez, you referred to. So we want to talk just briefly about Hollywood Animals and their safety plan. On February 13, we showed these photographs of individuals at Hollywood Animals walking tigers on leashes outside of the Hollywood Animals enclosure on a public road. Unfortunately, the photographs were in black and white. I believe we've now submitted color photographs, and they are on the screen as well. Here recently is a Hollywood Animals trainer who is walking a wild animal in Runyon Park. She says, "Took this little lady on a hike today." Appears she has a leash. Down below, you'll see she comments with emoticons, dog plus leopard equals death, which I think kind of says it all about the approach to safety. Here are more photographs of the Hollywood Animals trainers taking their tigers off-site into public parks on leashes. And here is what appears to be a lion from Hollywood Animals off-leash in a public park. Now, Hollywood Animals, like the applicant, allows for human contact between members of the public and the wild animals. Here is a member of the public petting a tiger at Hollywood Animals, or Hollywood Animals Tiger. And here is a member of the public feeding a marshmallow to a bear, a Hollywood Animals bear. This is the basis for the training that's received by, that was received by the applicant and her sister. We submitted photographs of the tigers at the Beverly Hills home of the applicant. I think there was some question at first about whether this was in fact the home of the applicant, but I believe the applicant now acknowledges that, yes, indeed, this is the home. We made contact with Nestor Tusa, with City of Beverly Hills, and were informed that there were no permits that were pulled for bringing tigers into the Beverly Hills home. I believe the explanation for that was that 10 years ago, things were different. We did not hear that, and we did not hear that same story, and find it difficult to believe that you can simply transport a wild animal to a new location without approvals or permits for doing so. Nevertheless, no permits located by the City of Beverly Hills. We were asked to contact the Special Events Department with the City of Beverly Hills. No permits issued, and similarly, no permits issued by the City of Los Angeles. Now, the, February, at the February 13 hearing, we heard from many speakers on behalf of applicant, the applicant, that they met the tigers at a North Hollywood location. And it's our understanding that this is a North Hollywood warehouse. These are photographs of the tigers in the warehouse in North Hollywood. And this is a photograph of the North Hollywood warehouse itself. Similarly, for the City of Los Angeles, no permits were obtained, according to the City of Los Angeles Animal Services Department, for the keeping of the tigers in the North Hollywood warehouse. They could not be located in the name of the applicant, her sister, or ICE's preservation. Now, the potential for human error that staff has identified is exacerbated here by the questions raised by the commission concerning who are the trainers of the tigers. We've heard that there are six adult members of the applicant's and the sister's family, and that those are the folks who will be responsible for the tigers. Only two, according to the submittals by the applicant, have ever received any training to handle the tigers. The other four members of the family, their sole qualification to handle the tigers is simply that they've been brought up around humans, that the tigers have been brought up around those members of the family. No information has been provided as to the qualifications, availability, or interest of the other four family members to care for the tigers. The potential for human error is also exacerbated in the event of an emergency. What was said on February 13 is that there will always be one person at the property. However, at least two people are required to handle and transport the tigers. So what was said on February 13 is, in the event of an emergency, well, we'll wait for a second person or somebody to get there, which of course poses serious problems in the event of an emergency, particularly because of the isolated area of Deer Creek, where access through this long, narrow road is difficult and time-consuming, particularly if you're coming from Beverly Hills. Now, adding to the confusion of who's going to be responsible here is the fact that the permit owner is not the applicant. Also, the property owner is not the applicant, rather, it's Wild Ones LLC. And we've submitted the information, Commissioner Adukas, that we discussed last time, that reflects that the current property owner is Wild Ones LLC. Now, just lastly on this topic of human error, and then I'll wrap up. The applicant proclaims that we leave no room for human error. And let's put aside the irony of a human saying that there is no room for human error. Every facility believes it cannot happen to me. It will not happen to me until it happens. As we showed in the photographs, they demonstrate that the applicant does not handle the tigers in a manner that reflects that they're cognizant of the fact that these are wild animals as opposed to pets. The tigers are treated as pets. Tragically here, the, there's a connection to an event at what is called Wildcat Haven. We submitted this information. It's our understanding that the applicant's sister was the head trainer at Wildcat Haven for five years. And just recently, there was a tragic mauling and death at that facility. So it can, and it does happen. There's a long list of people and groups that are opposed to this application. We've discussed the uniform opposition of the neighbors. We've discussed the 11,000-plus county residents that oppose this project. In addition, Santa... In addition, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, Congressperson Buck McKeon, Assemblyperson Jeff Gorrell, Supervisor Zev Yaroslavsky, the Humane Society, PETA, Tippi Hendrick, Hedren all oppose the keeping of the tigers in Deer Creek. We respectfully submit that the commission should adopt the staff's recommendation and deny the application for CUP.
Any questions, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you very much.
I have one question.
Yes.
In the letter that the commission received from Mr. Bradbury, he indicated there was new information or additional information, I assume.
The new--
Whatever it was is covered. You covered it.
I've covered it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Rodriguez, members of the commission. My name is Charles Coe. I'm here on behalf of the applicants. The determination before you is governed by Section 8181.35 of the Coastal Zoning Ordinance. If this commission makes a determination on the facts before it as opposed to the prejudice before it, and ignores hearsay and relies upon facts, it will vote to approve this The staff report, which has been submitted to you--
I'm sorry, could you repeat 8181 what?
Section 8181 hyphen 3 dash 5.
Thank you.
In the February 13, 2004 staff report, at page 15, the report indicates that the proposed keeping of wild animals in secure enclosures and in a fenced area less than one-third of an acre would have no discernible physical effect on the neighboring land uses. I appreciate one of the commissioner's acknowledgements earlier in comments and her recognition that this is a remote area. This is not a heavily populated area. It borders a state park on one side and borders farmland on another side. Two principal bases were asserted in recommending denial of the CUP in the report. One was under Section 8181.35(c), that the CUP application was not compatible with surrounding development, that the keeping of wild animals was more appropriate in a remote rural area with less population. This is a remote rural area that is not densely populated in any sense. The PowerPoint presentation that was made to the attention of the council before the break indicated that there are 19 residences surrounding the Martin facility, that the county of Ventura has permitted them to house up to 100 wild animals. This area, there's evidence of 28 residences within that area, knowing that the 19-acre parcel, which is quite large, on one side is bordered by wilderness and a state park, and on the other side by farmland. It would be arbitrary and capricious for this commission to find that one part of the county could accommodate 100 wild animals in relation to 28 here in terms of density, when density actually per animal and the permit that has already been approved actually allows for many more wild animals to be held in proximity to many more people at the existing In other words, is there a different standard governing this part of Ventura County than another? The other bases, which was cited by counsel for the opposition, was a citation in the staff report that, given the mere potential for human error, that this application should be denied. That is an impossible standard for anyone to meet. In fact, the report that's been submitted to the commission found it is not reasonably foreseeable that the tigers would escape. I'm sure the commission understands the importance of a finding by the staff of what "not reasonably foreseeable" means. Notwithstanding the recommendation by that staff that it is not reasonably foreseeable that these tigers would escape, on the mere potential for human error, they said, "There's the potential for human error resulting in the release of a dangerous animal that will always remain." These are animals that were born in captivity, have been fed by handlers their entire life. The surrounding wilderness has mountain lions, bobcats, other animals that do, in fact, hunt for their food and can pose a real and actual danger. That's not to say that these animals are not wild, but they are in captivity, and they have been held in captivity their entire life, and the fact remains that the report that has been submitted to you has found it is not reasonably foreseeable that they Because they're born in captivity, they do not hunt for their food, unlike the surrounding coyotes and mountain lions that exist in the wilderness in this area. And although the commission has reflected a concern that we focus on the matters at hand, it is relevant to this application process to know that one of the principal opponents, a neighbor, sought to purchase this very property, and that a financial interest may be what's driving this opposition apart, separate, and having nothing to do with the application before you. With regard to issues of sound, the report, the staff report, basically indicated that there were no findings or no report on which the commission could base any findings on. The applicants have indicated that the sound is akin to a German shepherd dog. The animals are spayed, they're not breeding, so two of the three times in which the tiger will make a sound are not present here under these circumstances. And we're talking about a 19-acre parcel and on the back part of it where the CUP is seeking to build the enclosure. They have successfully operated a facility for many years without incident, and although a number of photos have been flashed, many of them were not of the applicant's, were of third parties, and were taken out of context. If an animal is effectively an infant three to six months, they may look large in the photos, but the fact is that they're not an adult grown tiger, and those photos were taken many, many years ago and are of little, if any, relevance here. Quickly, with regard to issues of insurance, I'm informed that they have a separate insurance policy for wild animals, that they have plans for cellphone repeaters throughout the property to enhance cellphone reception, and that they hold phones from different carriers, which provides an overlay of safety such that if you were not able to get a signal with one carrier, you would be able to get a signal with a different carrier. As far as the windy roads, the prior submission made it clear that the animals are transported in modified secured pickup trucks, which are clearly up to the task of driving on these roads, unlike horse trailers, which are much more difficult in that type of winding terrain and which are not utilized. With regard to the claim about it would be impossible to meet an emergency, I believe that what's before you does have fail-safe plans for shelter in place in the event of a natural emergency. But again, all of the residents in this area face possible emergency with regard to mountain lions and other indigenous animals in the event of fire, et cetera. Finally, the submission and citation to comments from people like a congressman that doesn't even reside in this district, or an LA County supervisor who obviously has no problem with their maintaining a facility in his own county, but apparently has a problem doing it in someone else's county, has no relevance to what's before you. I understand that it's sometimes difficult to concentrate on the facts and put prejudice aside, but this is a very sound plan, this is a very appropriate place for these animals to be housed, and I would ask that the council, upon reflection on the facts and not the prejudice, would properly approve this CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Idukas?
Could you clarify that thing about cellphone repeaters?
Could I defer?
No, you're the one who said it. Could you just repeat exactly what you said again about cellphone repeaters?
I was informed that they have an intention to place repeaters, which I understand are antenna amplifiers, if you will, throughout the property to enhance cellphone reception.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Questions of staff? Clarification or anything?
If I may, Mr. Chair? I think staff's going to respond to this anyway, but the issue of the significant evidence as far as a secret requirement, did staff see that? I did not.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we have some very brief comments regarding the issues here at the end. First, I'm going to talk about visual impacts. I'm going to talk about the issue that Commissioner Idukas raised about the violations on the property, and then I'm going to talk about vibrations and noise. In terms of the visual impacts, there's no night lighting included in the project. So they would not have any night lighting other than what anyone could have as a ministerial act at a single-family dwelling location. There was an issue about the roof and that somehow that would create some kind of visual impact. Well, the site really can't be seen from a public viewing place. It can be seen from the neighbor's property, but private views are not protected under any ordinance or under SEQA. You can see the site, but it's quite remote from the street. But Commissioner Idukas?
I understand from the street, but from the trail, you can see the site. From Serrano Valley Trail, you can see the site. So how was it determined that there was no public viewing of the site?
Well, let me back up. It's not readily visible, and the trail is quite a distance from the site. And so looking at fences over that distance, which are not actually structures of buildings like Chainlink Fence, is not a prominent sight from the trail distance. Now, it's up to your commission whether that's incorrect judgment, but may I continue? The issue about how many residences are on the site, I believe when the applicant purchased the property, there are three buildings that the county would consider to be residences. When we visited the site as part of our review of this application, it became apparent that one of the buildings was illegally converted to a third residence. The issues there have been abated, and the bathroom removed, and the only thing left to take care of is to remove a kitchen facility in that building, which is really pending this application. We allowed it to remain until your commission or the county decision-makers made a decision on this application, because it's part of the permit that they would use that building and kitchen to store and cook the animal food, which, according to environmental health, cannot be cooked in the same facility as human food is being cooked. So that's the answer on the violations. And then there's the issue of noise. I would tell your commission that more important than our opinion and recommendation on what your decision should be, a more important job that we have is to make sure that your commission receives accurate and adequate information upon which to base your decision. As a professional geologist, on another case, I could stand up before you at the microphone and say, "This slope is stable." And that's an interesting conclusionary statement, but it doesn't mean anything unless you've provided the data and a report to back up what you've just said that allows it to be peer-reviewed. And so, you know, Mr. Hale said he concurred with my critique. Well, my critique concludes that his report is inadequate and not adequate for county use in the planning process, because it has all kinds of gaps in it. He's chosen not to provide a report. He provided some evidence or some testimony today, which is the same as a conclusionary statement, that I've modeled it and it violates noise standards. I would point out that Dr. Hale's report includes all kinds of analysis of various circumstances, instantaneous noise events like a single yelp and how far that would go, which are irrelevant to the county and our analysis, both under policy and under SEQA. We have a one-hour average noise standard, LEQ, one-hour standard, that does not involve instantaneous noises. So an instantaneous noise at 120 dB is not relevant to us. The issue is duration. And the report, as it sits here today, still does not include any-- And the report, as it sits here today, still does not include any information about, and justification really, for the noise levels for growling, moaning, and roaring. There's no justification for those noise levels. And there's no statement in there in the report as to what duration of those various noises were used. He testified that he used 10 minutes at the last hearing. And there's no evidence to support, that we can find to support, that there's going to be 10 minutes of roaring on average of any hour of the day. And so I would point out that, you know, he has not provided the parameters and the data that we could evaluate it. And I think that's particularly important when you have a report titled "Opposition to Tiger Facility," that you need to support your data. He also contradicted his report in his testimony here today. And I have his report, and this is the report dated February 11th, 2014, you know, submitted to your commission on the day before the hearing, on the February 13th hearing, entitled "Opposition to Proposed Outdoor Tiger Facility." And in there, he talks about, and I'm just going to read this, it's very short, "The human hearing system is not equally sensitive to sound at all frequencies. Because of this variability, a frequency-dependent adjustment called A-weighting has been devised by scientists so the sound may be measured in a manner similar to the human hearing system. The A-weighted sound level is abbreviated DBA." And so the DBA, Dr. Hale testified today that DBA is a distance-related phenomenon. Well, that's not consistent with what he says in his own report. A-weighting has to do with the human hearing range, and sounds that are below or above our hearing range are not counted as noise that we detect and feel as impacts. So we received inconsistent testimony today with his own written work. And so I'd like to read, which I often do at these hearings, my favorite section of the Blue Book. That would be the California Environmental Quality Act, the SEQA guidelines. And this is Section 1506-4 F5. It says, "Argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative, or evidence that is not, that is clearly inaccurate or erroneous, or evidence that is not credible, shall not constitute substantial evidence. Substantial evidence shall include facts, reasonable assumption predicated upon facts, and expert opinion supported by facts." And you may have received expert opinion, but it's not supported by facts. And so it does not constitute substantial evidence of an impact or an exceedance of county noise threshold standards. And so I think that what's before you today is there's no substantial evidence of a noise impact, and there's no substantial evidence that there's an exceedance of county threshold policies. My director has further comments.
I just wanted to share a little bit of my perspective with this, of having lived with it for as long as I have. I mean, I first want to thank the applicant, Ms. Hauser, and their consultant, Jensen Design. They really have been a good applicant. They have done everything that the county has requested that they do through this entire process. So the decision to make a recommendation for denial was difficult. We don't do that very often here at the county because typically we have an opportunity to work through issues with our applicants. But I did just want to put that on the record. I want to get to the issue very quickly of the safety plan. On page 17 of 24 that Chair Rodriguez raised, we said, "If an animal keeping permit is granted, a revised safety plan that reflects the scope of any approval will be required to be developed by the applicant and approved by the above-listed agencies prior to inauguration of the proposed use." And so, you know, we have to weigh the money that the applicant is spending to prepare a plan and gather the Fire Protection District and Animal Services and the Sheriff Office and the Environmental Health and Planning and the Park Service, which we would do if the process was approved, right? So I just wanted to say that we did look at that. We did acknowledge that it was deficient in certain ways and that it would require a really robust review, but I wasn't really willing to make them go through that process because I wasn't sure of the outcome of that. And it would also depend on the number of animals if they were granted the permit. So we do have that. The safety plan is a requirement, Condition 23, which is on page 16. So I do want to let you know that we have that issue covered. The things that went into my recommendation for denial have all been discussed here today, have all been discussed in the staff report. We used Steve Martin, and I'm sure that that analysis had its flaws as well. But, you know, the testimony or what I found compelling was a few different things. Clearly, the wildfire that we just had, Camarillo Springs, and my drive up there, right, how close it got. The fact that, you know, there could be potential for 57 lots, the density of it. And really, the fact that these camps that have existed out there since 1952 with thousands of children, right, in the vicinity, all played a role in my recommendation for denial. But that being said, I don't have the ability or I don't have the 10 hours of testimony, right, that you had either. I had what was on the written record. So, you know, based on, you know, there was arguments made both sides, right, that I think that I don't have that benefit when I make my recommendation. So I wanted to put that on the record as well. I want to also talk about the difference between SEQA findings, the California Environmental Quality Act findings that we make versus the conditional use permit findings. So I believe that the SEQA document, as it stands, and I didn't hear substantial evidence to that today, is satisfactory. That's impact on the environment. That is, what does the impact of putting five tigers in the open space area have on air quality, have on biology, have on roads, right? That's what that's discussing. Versus an equally important set of findings that you have to make for a conditional use permit. That talks about public safety, public health, safety and welfare. Talks about land use compatibility, those kind of findings that we have to make. So you have to make both sets. So I think we made the SEQA findings in the applicant's favor and the public health and safety and the land use compatibility findings are what I struggled with, is what I put on the record today. I would also say that probably no matter which way that your commission goes, I think that there should be some consideration that if we would say, if you, you know, the coastal zoning ordinance mentions wild animals in the matrix only, yes, you're allowed to apply for them in the open space zone, and then it says no more, right? So I think that, you know, regardless if we're to move forward or not, the recommendation that I asked in both sets of recommended actions, which I wrote up for you to approve or deny, would be to, that the planning staff asked the board of supervisors whether specific standards for the keeping of wild animals should be developed for inclusion into the coastal zoning ordinance, because I do think it's a little unfair that both the staff and the applicant have to weigh this with no standards. So there isn't a standard to say if you're over 20 acres, right, if you back up to the national forest, if you're within five miles from a camp, right? So none of those standards are there for us to review. So, you know, that's just what we had to go with based on all of the written testimony that I was received, that was received and that I did read through before I made my recommendations. So I just wanted to share my thoughts with you before you went forward.
Thank you. I see a representative from the Sheriff's Department here, and there's been a lot of talk about communications and that type of thing. I'd like to call Commander Stewart up to the podium.
Good morning.
Thought you were going to get away.
I thought I was, yes, absolutely.
You know, it's been a long time since I was in a patrol car with the Sheriff's Department, but I certainly remember issues of communications and we used to go 10-6 below the rock, meaning that we're going south below Magoo Rock, and the difficulty of communications, radio communications there. I know it's improved in the past. Can you give me an update on how it is now?
Yeah, with the new improvements in the radio system, we have excellent radio communication down there, unlike it was in the '70s and '80s where you had no communication. All my patrol staff tells me that they have no problem accessing dispatch from any of the areas. Cellphone coverage is a little more challenging and spotty in certain areas.
I was referring to the '60s.
Been back in the '60s too, so. It didn't change much until a few years ago.
Yeah. I know if we didn't come back in half an hour, somebody went looking for us. Tell me about the capabilities that reverse 911, both on cellphone and landline.
Yeah, we have the ability with VC Alert. If people from the community want to register for VC Alert, they can get automatic updates whenever we send out any kind of a reverse 911. But we can also set up essentially a fence around that area. And if we were notified, if dispatch was notified of an escape situation, it could automatically be sent out to a pre-designated residences in the area to notify them of the situation and to provide them direction on what they should do, whether it's to shelter in place or to evacuate the area, depending on what the emergency was.
So they would contact the Sheriff's Department and register their telephones?
They can register their cellphones. If it's a landline, we can actually, we can geo-base that area and set up our own parameters and have it already ready to go as soon as the phone call comes in, and that information could be sent out almost instantaneous to us receiving the phone call.
Thank you.
So you send the phone call out, but if somebody has, you know, their cellphone and their cellphone there is very spotty, how does that work then?
Well...
You make the call, how does the person receive the call?
Well, again, if it's a landline.
No, if it's a...
If it's a cellphone, it depends on whether or not they're going to receive service or not.
Okay. So if you do not receive service and service is very spotty there, I couldn't have my Sprint phone work wherever I went in that area. What happens then?
Then you will probably not receive the message until later, once it's left on your voicemail.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions?
Thank you.
I have questions.
Question for staff from Commissioner Dukas.
Have you had a chance to look over those things and see that 1650 square foot, what you were saying was a, before you said garage, or that's what I remembered, but now you're saying it was a barn?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Idukas, perhaps Jay has more commentary on that, but my understanding is that there were three buildings and like the real estate ad, they would, the average person would say those are three dwelling units. And when we came to the site, we said, "You can't have three dwelling units." And so the bathroom and various other domestic fixtures were removed from one of the buildings. It's going to be used for either storage, should their permit be denied, or if their permit is granted, it would be part of the permit and they'd be allowed to store and prepare cat food.
I heard what you said. I asked you if you looked at that paperwork.
Only briefly.
Okay. Could you bring up pictures of the staff report? You have pictures of where the photographs from your staff report. Can you bring them back up?
Those were in PowerPoint presentation.
PowerPoint presentation. I misspoke.
I don't know if we have that loaded.
We're working on it.
While that goes, let me ask some other questions. One of the things where, where does the tiger poop go? Somebody said that the amount of waste was underestimated, and they said that Waste Management doesn't accept it. Currently, there was stuff in the staff report that said that it's taken at Sunshine Canyon in Silmar. For the proposed facility, where would that waste go? Okay.
Go ahead, Jay, if you've got it.
We're looking in the volume of material here. We have a manure management plan, and so we're looking for that. Sorry.
My recollection says that waste, it would be contained, picked up immediately, as soon as practically and bagged or contained on-prem until it was picked up by Waste Management on a weekly basis.
So, but we also have...
It's Exhibit 5 of your staff report.
Okay. And we also have testimony that says Waste Management doesn't accept that waste. Is that, is that just a...
There are facilities that accept waste. I know this from a case that I worked on in Santa Barbara County, where, and of course, horse manure is another large volume of waste that is taken regularly. So there are places that take it.
Understand. I have a little bit of background in Waste Management and experience with regard to Sunshine Canyon, and they cannot accept this waste because it is out of county. That's where currently the tiger's waste is going. But once it moves out of Ventur County, Sunshine has a limitation on where they take waste from. So we also have information in our packet that says Waste Management doesn't take it. Is that not correct?
I don't know.
Okay.
Is the answer. The Environmental Health looked over the manure management plan and found this to be acceptable, so I'm not...
I think that we can find the answer to that.
Okay. And horse manure is entirely different than tiger manure. Okay. Let us look. Isn't this great? Don't you love this? Anyway, there were some other questions that I had about the location of the Hauser's property and how close it is to the trailhead, because I think it's like less than 1,000 And there's also a photograph that was submitted by Mary Cummins that shows the view to, you know, the, where she was saying acres and acres of open space. That is true, and it shows the trail. So you can clearly see the trail in the, so if you can see the trail, that means from the public trail, you can see the property anyway.
Is this a direct line of sight? I've never been on that trail. Is it, no, it's just flat or is it undulated? Have you been up there?
I've been out there.
Okay. I'm just asking, what's the terrain like?
The terrain is variable. Yeah. It's very variable. So parts of it, nope, you can't see anything. Other parts, you see everything.
Thank you.
It's remarkable. It's a beautiful area, and I can understand why you would want to live there. So did we get the PowerPoint up to find out how close that trail is? My question is, did anyone from staff, how was it determined that you couldn't see it from a public area, because you certainly can?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Idukas, you know, I'm looking to where we wrote it down, but my recollection is we looked at the GIS, and it's roughly a quarter mile away from the enclosure to the trail. And so your view from the trail would be a house, a guest house, a storage building, and then some cages made out of chain link, essentially chain link. And we didn't feel that that was a substantial change in the view of this developed residential site from a quarter mile away.
Not when it, well...
Hold it.
It was, at that point, it wasn't roofed. At that point, this was not enclosed with a roof, a roof of material that doesn't have any tensile strength and requires a lot of support. You can't string that along without it, you know, sagging. So there would, as soon as you put it, a roof on top, it changes it entirely. I agree that simply having a fence, there's a number of fences in the area. But as soon as you put a roof on nearly a third of an acre, that changes things in my mind.
Commissioner Dukas, I would also say that the requirement for a roof is only a requirement of mine because of talking with the zoo in Santa Barbara. I see that their lion cages are roofed. There's not a requirement from the USDA or the Fish and Wildlife that they're roofed.
But this is, this is something that we're considering, is a roofed structure, and the reason for that is to respond. I understand that you're trying to do everything to respond to people's concerns that the tigers might escape. And so we didn't have any question, we didn't have... And so we didn't have any question, we didn't have an answer of how tiger, how high they can jump and how high the fence needs to be, I recall that, we didn't get an answer to that. So we came up with this idea that there's going to be a roof, a roof on a structure that is a large structure, and most certainly, you can see it from this public trail. So how was it determined that it was not viewable, just from GIS? No one actually went out there? Is that correct?
I did not go out on the trail, no.
Did staff go out there, anyone from, okay, no one from staff went out there at all?
Anyone to the park.
Yes.
No, we went to the site, not to the park.
Okay, all right. Is there, I direct this to County Council, is there a provision in SEQA case law where if you have conflicting expert opinion, that the decision-making body can, you know, pick one? Or what do you do when there's conflicting expert opinion with regard to SEQA issues?
That's a good question, and it depends on what the SEQA issue is. The SEQA issue before your commission is whether or not to approve the negative declaration. And so I should, to answer your question, I'll take a step back. And the rule on negative declaration is that an agency may adopt a negative declaration only if there is no substantial evidence that a project may have a significant effect on the environment. And so your question goes to sort of the existence of substantial evidence. And so if the project's opponents, I'll call them, presented substantial evidence through an expert that does, that does meet the threshold in your mind that the project may have a significant effect on the environment, then that is sufficient, a sufficient basis for you not to approve the negative declaration, even if there's expert testimony that conflicts with that and says, "No, that's not a significant effect on the environment."
So there is solid case law that when there's conflicting, this happens all the time, and I'm very familiar with the case because it happened to be Sunshine Canyon, where there were conflicting expert opinions, and the decision-making body went with one over the other. And this decision-making body can do that if it chooses, is that correct?
That is correct in this context, and I guess I should, the analysis would be different if this was an environmental impact report. And in that case, when there's conflicts between expert opinions, then that isn't a basis not to approve the EIR, but when you're talking about a negative declaration, it's different. But I should also point out that expert opinion must consist of, or be based upon substantial evidence. And so that is the standard that Mr. Baca addressed before. And so in order for you to rely on that expert opinion, it has to be substantial evidence, which has to have a proper foundation and can't be conclusory or is based on an argument, it has to have substance.
Understood, and I'd, it could be argued that we have that. Is, could, do you agree that it's arguable that we have that?
Respectfully, that's not my role to go there. That's a role of your commission to decide.
I believe it's arguable. The other question that I had, and perhaps this was for, this way, the 12 to 15-foot height of the enclosed structure, if you had that six-gauge chain link, not chain link, but that material, how often would you need to have like I-beams and posts to keep that up? And is, are there, do we have off-the-shelf standards for that in builder, building and safety, or is that something we're making up as we go along?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Duquesne, I would have to profess that I'm uniquely unqualified to answer that question. That's a building structural question that would depend on how high it's approved to be and how thick the wire would be, and then a structural engineer would determine what the adequate bracing is. So I don't think we could answer that until there's actual building plans are submitted and reviewed by our building officials group.
Okay, thank you. There was the offer to have repeater stations on the property. What kind of, what kind of process would the applicant have to go through that? And is it something that would be, that's conceivably allowed in that area?
Commissioner Duquesne, I truly apologize, I was looking for something else at the moment. Could you possibly repeat your question, I'm sorry?
Yes, what kind of process would the applicant have to go through if they made good on their promise to have cellphone repeater, you know? I'm blanking on the name of the thing.
It would be called a wireless communication facility, and they would have to get a CUP to install it.
Okay, and, so that would be a separate CUP?
That's correct.
Okay. One thing that concerns me is that there was reference made that this has been a five-year search and a five-year process with Ventura County, where there are communications made to the applicant that despite the five years, that it was not, that does not predict approval of the CUP?
That's a, it's a discretionary permit process. So as I understand it, Ms. Hauser probably came to the county and came to the counter with her different permits and said, you know, "Is this one in the open space zone?" And looked at the different GIS layers through it to see what would be a good likelihood of success, but there's never any guarantee on any discretionary permit process. And Commissioner Duquesne, I did just talk to Melinda Talent from the Environmental Health Department that did just call the Simi Valley landfill and said that they don't have any distinction between waste, be it tiger or elephants, which we have in the county, which they pick up as well, or horse manure.
Okay, so that was just an error, somebody wrote that in error, okay.
Thank you.
How does staff respond to the information that we have that, with regard to the insurance issue? I know I couldn't, I had problems with a trampoline, I can't imagine, you know, what kind of, what I would need to do for a tiger.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Duquesne, I can report I had a similar trampoline problem, and for which I'm still suffering. And, but in terms of liability, I believe the liability for anything that happens with the tigers rests with the operator and owner and the holder of the permit. And I don't think I have an exclusion or a provision in my homeowner's insurance for if my neighbor allows something dangerous to come into my yard. So I think, I think the testimony earlier that insurance cover, you know, sort of natural events, and if you're doing something unusual, you have to carry your insurance to cover the liability that you're incurring on your neighbors.
Mr. Chair, point and word, if I may, if Mr. Guilford would like to answer that specific point, I'd like to represent but not testify, that's your typical homeowner's policy, so that if a wild animal attacked you, has nothing to do with you having a wild animal. So like in this particular situation, you're out in an area where wild animals exist, your particular homeowner's policy may not protect you from a rabbit, coyote. But again, I don't want to put words in Mr. Guilford, but I think what he showed us was a typical homeowner's policy, with the exceptions such as forced manure and all these other things that they do.
So following up on that, I know that for the dog-wolf hybrid, he had insurance that was part of the conditions, is that right? Is there something similar in this, in this application, a requirement for a minimum amount of insurance? There is not?
I'll check, being not blessed with instant recall.
Okay. And did we ever get the photos? We did, okay, excellent. And after this, I'm done. We got it. So we're waiting for a response on the insurance? Are we going to skip?
What's typically in every conditional use permit is the indemnification for the county. So as I understood it, that you said that we had a special condition in the wolf-dog permit that required him to have different insurance?
Yes.
And that's the question I'm going to call up and ask staff.
I'm just wondering. Okay, do we have a further, an aerial further back? Okay, see the thing that's marked "storage"? That was the house that was 1650, and in all the real estate listings state very clearly it's a house, and there are a number of pictures of the interior, if you go on that link. Clearly a house, it was not a barn. So, is that what, is that what was on the side of the road? I have pictures also of the sink, there's, did you see the pictures that I took of the side of the road?
No, when you say on the side of the road, you'll have to clarify that.
Perhaps it's the drive, it's a drive to the gate, you know how it's on a flag lot?
Right.
Okay, it was immediately on, it's almost as soon as you get off of Pacific View, that's where the stuff has been for weeks, to my knowledge.
Okay, right.
And it matches the interior view of the listings. So it came, that's where it came from, it's not, you can match it in the photos, that's why I printed all that out.
Okay, again, I'm not aware of any rubbish that would be on the road, any open storage, anything like that on the property. I don't recall that planning staff has ever been there within the past several weeks or even past few months. When planning staff did visit the property, we did note that there was a, it was illegally converted to a dwelling unit at one point in time. And that violation has subsequently been partially abated. Again, the full abation would rest with the decision here of the commission. If the CUP is denied, then the kitchen facilities will need to be removed from that dwelling unit. If the CUP is approved, then there is a condition of approval that will allow the kitchen facilities for the preparation of the animal diets.
And that's the building that is marked "storage" there?
Yes, that's correct, it's up in the top-left, "storage."
Okay, but it clearly was a house, and that was the building that was 1650 square feet. And then that second dwelling is the 700 square foot. And if you have another photo that's further back in an aerial? Okay, see where the, like stables are?
Yes.
And that long drive leading to the gate? That is where the stuff has been dumped for weeks, and it matches the photos of the listings of the inside of the guest house. And you're just not aware of that?
That's correct.
Okay. At the top of the hill, beyond the Hauser's property, it looks like you're, you don't have something a little bit wider than this?
No, unfortunately, that's all we have in the PowerPoint.
If you go on Google Earth, you can see where the trailhead is, and from the trailhead, you cannot see the house. But as you go on the trail, and there is a photo from Mrs. Cummins that shows the, is it pronounced Sereno or Sereno Valley? Sereno, that trail, I always mispronounced it. You can, you can look down. So at no time, no staff member went out on the trail to determine that it's, that you can see it.
That's correct. You're right, and at the trail, the valley, Serano Valley, I believe it's called, can be seen from the subject property. However, staff did not go into the valley, the national park, to view the subject property.
Okay, well, I think, I think I've made my point. You can see it from the trail, and the trail connects to La Jolla, Sycamore, Backbone, it's, and we also have testimony from Channel Islands that they use the area, and I believe some other testimony. So that's just something that I noticed in the staff report was not correct. Thank you, that is all I've got.
Okay, no other questions of staff? We'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We're going to take a five-minute break and come right back. Okay, let's reconvene in the meeting. We've closed the public, the public hearing portion. Discussion by commissioners. Do we have something from County Council?
Oh yes, I just wanted to address the question about liability insurance that will be carried by the applicant and potential permadee, and they represented that they do in fact carry insurance that covers, that would cover the tigers in the event of an escape and injury of a third party with limits of a million dollars.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. Commissioner Maggie.
Well, first of all, I'd also like to applaud the applicant. They had a good amount of due diligence in the process, without question. But what do we have? We have a, wild animals are allowed on the applicant's property based on the coastal zoning ordinance. Okay, but there's no standards, and I have a problem with that. I mean, I've heard a lot of testimony about how far away are people from this property and how far away should you be in order to have something like this? And that'd be a standard, or the density of neighbors, noise levels. I'm sure we don't, I don't have a definitive idea what that is yet. You know, the minimum level of communication in case of emergency, there's nothing in the ordinance about that. I'm sure there'd be a different standard for a sanctuary versus a place of business where you transport wild animals. So I'm hung up on the standards issue as relates to this application.
Commissioner Duquesne.
I'd like to commend everyone for donating all this time and all this effort into protecting your home in this gorgeous area. I can understand why you feel so proud and protective of it. I was really struck by its incredible beauty, absolutely a fantastic public resource, the hiking trails in the area. Just to, just to paint a picture for people who haven't, who perhaps have not been there, the backdrop is Mount Boni, which is extremely picturesque, but you turn around and it's the Pacific Ocean with rolling hills intervening. It's just, it's just lovely. There was a lot of information that I took notes on, that we read. Some of it was compelling and some of it does not, doesn't-
It doesn't pertain to the planning commission. So it might be something that's true, that's supported by facts, and that is very important to different people. But it's not within the purview of the planning commission. Those issues had to do with... Gosh, the fear and anxiety that people might have. The advisability of breeding white tigers. Of what it takes to get a white tiger. That's not something that we have any control over. So we just have to accept what is. We have conflicting evidence about sequence impacts. And I think that... I think we also have... There were two areas. One had to do with the biological resources and whether or not, you know, procedures were followed to make sure that these tigers wouldn't have an impact on the wildlife. I certainly know that there's a lot of wildlife there. And then we have the noise issue. But going to the things that... So those things I... In my decision-making process, I go through like a series of, like, SIVs. You know, and there are certain things that just I filter out because they're not ours to wrestle with. But certain things are. And the... There were some things that were brought up that just were factually incorrect. And I had a real problem getting straight answers on something just as simple as, is that a barn or is that a house? Clearly, the photos show that it was a house. And I felt that your answers were not forthcoming. And that's something that really sets me off. I felt that the photographs at home showed supported credence to safety protocols just not being adhered to in a way that made me feel any level of security or comfort. The notion that you have more risk driving on PCH than you do from these tigers. People assume a certain amount of risk in their life and they accept that risk. They accept the risk every time they get in the car. Or if they live in an area where there are mountain lions, coyotes, rattlesnakes, et cetera. But those risks are there already. This is an introduced risk, which in my mind is completely different than something that's already there, that people have already made that judgment and people accept. I find that this... We did something else where we had a very long hearing. We had people out on both sides having to do with the dog-wolf hybrid facility. In my mind, there is no question that these are not, you know, tiger hybrids. They're not in any way... There's no DNA strain of a domesticated animal. So to me, that's very distinct. One, the wolf-dog hybrids, there was a mistake made that they even needed to come to the planning commission because it was considered a kennel, because they were dogs and not wolves. That is another difference in my mind from those inherently dangerous animals, is what our zoning ordinance calls it for the non-coastal area. And this coastal zoning ordinance, this is all what we're going on, with wild animals. One thing that really caught my attention was that wild animals and then nothing further. All we have is a little box and an X saying, "With the CUP, you can have them." And what they're defined as is animals which are wild by nature and not customarily domesticated in Ventura County. What a lousy definition of a wild animal. Because I thought somebody made a very compelling argument, speaking to, "These are exotics." And when the applicant spoke, she talked about exotics. A wild animal is something quite different than an exotic animal, which is another reason why I think that our standards here are just absolutely lacking. It's... I don't want to back into a situation where we are approving animal enclosures and you are doing everything in your power to accommodate the legitimate concerns of people with the safety and the... Making it as safe as possible where the tigers cannot escape. However, we don't have the expertise and I am not comfortable. We are not biologists. We have no business making approvals on the fly for a structure that may or may not even be structurally sound. I don't know what kind of tensile strength that those... That gauge wire has and what kind of post and beam construction you have to have in order to have a truck to get in underneath it. I just think that it's nonsense that this is something that we're making up as we're going along. And I think it's very ill-advised. So I felt that the fire danger was too extreme. And the two main roads, Deer Creek, I think there is no way I would want any kind of truck to use Deer Creek to go down, to leave the property. Because when I went there the first time, my brakes overheated. And it was a branded... A one-year-old car. Going the other way on Yerba Buena seems a lot more reasonable. But the terrain is... It's extremely mountainous, in contrast to the facilities where... In Lockwood Valley. Completely different. And you cannot compare the fire danger in that Santa Monica Mountains. All you have to do is go there and see the devastation of the most recent fire and the riotous growth since the Green Meadow Fire in 20 years ago. It's dramatic. And there is no comparison between the two areas. And I think that smiling and laughing when people are talking about fire safety showed very poor comportment on the part of the supporters of the applicant. And so for those reasons, I cannot support it as it's proposed right now. I think that in a separate action, we can go to the board of supervisors and say, can you come up with standards that deal with wild animals give better clarification about what that actually means and what their needs are? And but what we have before us right now? And, you know, all of the attempts to make it palatable to the neighborhood, to make sure that the tigers don't escape, just add to the problems. To have a third of an acre structure with glinting metal roof, it just would have a great visual impact, one that has not been analyzed. So that's all I have to say about it at this point.
Commissioner Onstott?
Well, I've sat up here for a couple of years, and this is a first for me. I've got a staff report that goes 180 one way and a recommendation that goes the other way. And I have trouble reconciling until I thought it through. The applicant has met every test. The environmental report came back negative declaration. The use is permitted in the zone. There's no evidence to deny the CUP of a substantive nature. I don't think there's any really serious factual disputes that would stop me from voting for the applicant. And the reason for that is a perfect safety record. People on site, no public access. I look at the conditions that are imposed. And staff has come up with standards that don't exist in the code. That's exactly what they've done. And I feel sorry for the staff. And I understand why they went through and jumped through all these hoops, having received no direction. And no matter what comes out of here today, this whole thing should go back to the board of supervisors for further study so that guidelines can be set. But I feel that the restrictive conditions imposed by staff would probably be stronger than anything that would have ever come out of the board of supervisors. A two-year permit. If you think about it, they'll be back in front of us in two years. If there are any real problems, existence out there, they will have been discovered, thought through, dealt with. Or if there's a significant problem out there during the two-year period, this sound situation is as the residents in the area think it might be, then they can come back in also. There's just too much... There is no credible, as far as I'm concerned, expert testimony upon which I can deny a CUP based on sound. And sound was one of the chief concerns that I had. I lived between Santa Paul and Fillmore. Rancho Sespe had a film permit up there once, and they had lions. I live a mile and a half away, and I thought they were next door. So, I mean, I'm quite sensitive, but we don't have substantive evidence, expert evidence, upon which to deny the permit based on noise. I mean, that may happen. It may develop, but it doesn't exist now. Staff's position was denied based on public safety and compatibility. Well, I didn't see any evidentiary... Substantive evidentiary support to deny it on a public safety basis. As I said, the conditions exceed all standards. The safety records is perfect. On the compatibility issue, I can't draw any serious distinction between this one and Lockwood Valley. And I don't think we should have two standards, as the gentleman said, one for Malibu and one for Lockwood Valley. I mean, I'm not saying there isn't a lot of work that may need to be done on the, quote, "wild animals." But as everything exists today, as the record appears before me, I feel I have no choice but to vote and approve the CUP. I mean, tigers, that's what this is all about. Everybody's scared to death. Who wants a tiger next door? I can understand and appreciate that. But it's actually permitted. All the conditions have been met and exceeded. So what are we supposed to do up here? Invent a problem to... So that they can't go forward because we haven't done our job? I don't think so. I think what has to happen is that we need to do our job. The matter needs to be referred back to the policymakers to clarify this issue. But I'm not prepared to stop the application because we haven't got direction from the policymakers. So as I said, all the conditions have been met. We have a negative declaration. I can't find a public safety or compatibility issue. And I'm prepared to vote to approve the application.
Commissioner Westner?
I concur with a lot of the information from my three colleagues. And I've wrestled with this one just like we did with Lockwood. So you understand the SIVs that I use to go through the process. Property owner acquires a property. That property is subject to the zoning and terms and conditions which the property has at the time that they acquired it. Part of that is that they are in open space and they're permitted to have wild animals. And therefore, then our standards stop. So, first SIV they met. Second SIV, they comply for a conditional use permit, which is their right under our codes. And that conditional use permit, the staff analyzes for, does it meet certain criteria and certain elements, which they have laid out on their staff report? Then we receive testimony, both for and against. Day and a half now. Almost 1,000 pages, several hours. Yes, we're not the experts in biology. We're not the experts in a lot of things, but that's the reason we exist. We have experts, we have public testimony, we're the ones to make the decision. All right? And so what we're relied on is to be this average citizen and reacting to it. Yes, we all bring our own expertises, our backgrounds, whether it's waste management, security. But at the same time, the buck stops here. Now sadly, I agree, the board of supervisors only gave them 75 cents for the buck. And that's what we get paid to do. It's a little joke on my part, just so you know. And so it's not an easy decision. I agree with the commissioner. I would not want it next door to me. But at the same time, I'm not out in open space. Lockwood Valley to me, set the precedent. Here are the standards. We apply the standards. The property owner has a right to expect those standards. And if they come to a conditional use permit, is there a reasonable expectation those standards can be met? Best management practices, qualifications, state and federal requirements as far as these particular animals, the track records, the history that the applicant has demonstrated, all the information, and we weigh it and we sit. And it comes down to, do we want a pack of wolves or do we want two to five lion... I mean, tigers, I'm sorry. So the question then gets to the point, is there truly a question of public safety that staff has represented in the capacity question? Is there enough evidence, information to sway my decision one way or the other? And I go back to not only what the applicant's attorney represented, but what my fellow commissioner said. We've evaluated wild animals being contained and applied standards and best practices. So I'm really 51-49 here. But if I'm gonna go with the situation through the SIVs that I've gone through, is I would have to approve the CUP based on the current standards and situations that exist before this body today.
Well, we all... Obviously, all have gone through a lot during the last two days. We've probably gone through approximately 1,500 pages worth of documents in addition to what we have here in front of us today. It's a tough process, and I appreciate staff's predicament. I appreciate the work they put into it. I appreciate the response back on issues that came up during... After the February 13 hearing, to be able to bring us back information related to those comments and those reports. And I have, you know, I have issues. I've been up there. It's been a while, but I've been up there and I've driven that road up there. I'm reasonably familiar with what's up there. I've driven it both daytime and reluctantly at night under response to a call for service with the sheriff's department. And I spoke in jest, but it was very true. If we went south of Magoo Rock on PCH, you were out of radio communication for the length of time you were down there. Over the years, it improved tremendously. Certainly, cell phones have given us a great link to stay connected. But as we've heard and we all know, if you traverse that area or live in that area, cellphone coverage can be spotty. I have a lot... I have... I had a lot of questions. I think I asked most of them, but the questions I asked tended... I felt had to do with the issue of compatibility and how this operation, this proposal, would fit into that zoning, that environment up there. I obviously had some concerns about that and the issue of public safety. And that comes to mind immediately because of the issue of the fact that it's tigers, they're wild animals, they're exotic animals. And in processing that, I remembered an incident that I had, a very real incident that I had when I was employed as a law enforcement officer, in a response to a call in the Newberry Park area, long before it was developed to the length it is now. And that call was from neighbors in a neighborhood reporting a black panther in the area. And at that time, we had to respond. There was no response, mental control, or fishing game. We responded. And I spoke to... My partner and I spoke to residents... And I spoke to -- my partner and I spoke to residents. They were very concerned. There were children in the area, it was daytime. And they told us what they'd seen and pointed us to a field directly across the street adjacent to these houses. And being young and naive, we decided to see what that was all about. And spread out about 20, 30 feet apart, started walking in the general direction of this reported sighting. He with a revolver and I with a 12-gauge shotgun. And we walked in about 50 feet, maybe. And all of a sudden, out in front of us, 25 yards in front of us, this black cat springs up, five feet in the air, and just dashes. Obviously, it got our attention. We managed to get off a shot, but 12-gauge buck at that distance, I'm sure we didn't hit it. It did leave. But I say that because I've experienced that, not as a resident, but as a responder. And I encountered the concern and fear residents had in that circumstance. I assume that was probably a cat that escaped from -- probably a cougar, a black cougar that escaped from the old jungle land that used to be in Thousand Oaks that's long since closed. It would have been about that time. But it's a very real experience I had. And so that's, you know, so I can really understand some of the concerns here. I could go on and on with a number of other things to talk about, but I don't think I need to belabor all those issues anymore. Most of us have spoken about them. I wasn't here when the Lockwood Valley was -- was before this commission. I was out of town, couldn't attend, so I'm not privy to that information. All I have is the comments and the decision of the board here. But where I sit right now, I'm not prepared to approve the CUP.
So we need a motion, and I would just move to move the staff's recommended actions to deny the CUP. I think it's on page -- let me see if I can get it.
Twenty-two, twenty-four.
Yeah, it's the page 22 of 24, the staff's recommended actions under G. Move that, those recommendations.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
Tell them they can appeal.
Okay, we're not getting it on our screens, if you're wondering what the delay is about. So I'll go ahead and take a voice vote on this. Commissioner Maggie.
My vote is to deny the CUP.
So on the motion, it would be yes?
Yes.
Okay, I vote aye.
Commissioner Wester?
No.
Commissioner Onstott?
No.
And I vote aye, deny the CUP. My understanding recollection is you -- the applicant has time to appeal the process to the 10 days to appeal the decision, if they choose to do that, to the Board of Supervisors. With that, we still have business to conduct, so those of you that are going to leave and I -- okay, we'll take five minutes, then we'll come back and conclude our six comments by the director.
The only thing that I had for you that I was going to go over our next couple of hearings. So we have two items on the 17th, April the 17th, and that.
What about the 3rd?
So, yeah, April 3rd. I was just trying to gauge the time by looking at them. So April 3rd, yes, we have two items. April 17th, I think you can expect a crowd.
What do we got?
You have a --
That's the beach.
No, you have a wedding facility continuation permit.
Is that Muscle Shoals?
No, it's for Tropical Paradise out in the Santa Rosa Valley. Yeah, that one's on the 17th, right. And the other one, the Cranston Appeal, but, you know, I don't think you're going to receive -- well, I don't know. But I would just say April 17th, plan on a longer day, yes. A lot of public testimony for that. That's all I have. I'll take, you know, what you've done today here in front of the board and ask them for what they think about standards, and I'll report back to you as soon as I hear something. So that's all I have. Do you have anything that you'd like for me?
I got a question. You know, when I think of wild animals, I don't think of exotic tigers. I think of mountain lions, coyotes. So maybe we could add some definitions in that request?
Right. And I would say to the defense of the local coastal plan, it probably was last updated with any sort of regularity back in 1986. So we've lost, you know, the positions to keep those updated. So we, you know, we have gotten a rather large grant, and we are working on a local coastal plan update. This isn't part of it, but if the board directs us to be part of it, then we'll search for some funds to get that done.
Yeah, I saw that, and I looked through, and that wasn't on there.
It wasn't.
Gee whiz.
Yeah, because it wasn't an issue at the time. At the time, we scoped it out and got grant funding, it wasn't an issue.
Funny how issues fly, huh? Two things, do teenagers qualify as exotic or wild animals?
I don't have any teenagers yet.
Okay, okay. Do we have -- still have four at home?
I can go home now.
No.
I still have four. I still have four children.
Mazel tov, bubby.
Thank you.
Okay, let's adjourn the meeting. See ya. Until next time.